I call to order this regular meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District Number Forty-Eight Governing Board. Today is Tuesday, April eighteenth. Vice President Werner, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start with a roll call from my far right, please.
Amy Carney.
Zach Lindsay.
Libby Hartwells.
Karen Warner.
And I'm Julie Sinowski. All board members are present. We do have a quorum this evening. I'm going to remind our audience of our meeting decorum.
Do you do that before the approval of your?
I'm sorry. No, we're going to approve the agenda first. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 No, I need, I'm sorry, I need to pull something off consent.
Those in opposition, say nay.
Nay.
Board Member Carney.
I want to pull an item off consent, please. I'm also going to add one to pull off.
Excuse me? Can you repeat that?
Sorry, I haven't said it. I'm, I'm, that happened a little faster than I was ready for. I would like to pull off, off consent, aye. Nope, eight n. The approval of renewal IGA with the Greater Phoenix Educational Management Council. N.
Are you talking about eight aye?
Oh, is it eight aye? So I was right the first time, eight aye.
Eight aye.
It's fine.
In.
In.
One n.
In.
One n. I'm pulling aye, so it's aye and n. Let's have some order.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item eight n from the consent agenda.
Eight n, approve the renewal of the Intergovernmental Agreement IGA with Greater Phoenix Educational Management Council, GPEMC, and AZ Educational Management Council. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Noted that Board Member Carney has requested further discussion in pulling the consent agenda, eight n.
Eight aye.
And Vice President Werner?
Eight aye. Website.
What would you like done with eight aye?
I'd like it pulled, please, for discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Board Member Werner would like to further discuss the recommended approval of revised job description and position for Web Content Strategy Manager. That is eight aye on our agenda. Anything else? Seeing that there are no other requests, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Board Member Werner made the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And Board Member Carney made the second on that. All in favor to approve as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. That motion to pass the agenda as amended passes five zero. Okay. Now at this time, we'll get to our decorum statement. Citizens attending and/or participating in the Scottsdale Unified School District meetings, either in person, virtually, or telephonically, are required to observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the members of the governing board and staff. Unauthorized remarks or demonstrations from members of the audience, yells, outbursts, and/or disruptions are not permitted. Members of the public are not allowed to approach the dais at any time while the governing board meeting is in session without express permission from the governing board president. All right, moving on to three. Dr. Menzel, please introduce our student-staff recognitions and celebrations.
Well, good evening, President Sinowski, Vice President Werner, and members of the governing board. From academics to fine arts to the Scottsdale community at large, to athletics, we have some wonderful celebrations to share with you this evening. First, I would like to invite Margaret Serna, Executive Director of Elementary Education, to the podium to get us started. Ms. Serna?
Well, I would like to invite Coronado High School student Cara Armstrong and her principal, Amy Palitucci, to join me at the podium. Okay, do you want to?
It's a celebrator.
Okay, we're still going to, okay. For thirty-five years, Sister Cities International has encouraged youth worldwide to express its mission through the original artwork and literature. Winners from local competitions, such as the ones sponsored by the Scottsdale Sisters City Organization, advance to an international competition. The theme of this year's Young Artists and Authors Contest was food security in my community. With citizens of our own community across Arizona and globally impacted by food production challenges out of their control, food security is growing and a worldwide reality. Here at Coronado High School, entering the written portion of Sister Cities competition became a classroom assignment for Dr. Jo Marquette's dual enrollment college English classes. We are pleased to report that her students' entries ran the table, so to speak, picking up all five monetary awards and two honorable mentions. Representing her classmates, and I don't think she's here tonight, is she here yet? Okay. Senior Cara Armstrong, whose essay "Climate Changes Community" took fourth place. I have a coin that I would like for you to pass on.
I will make sure she gets it.
To Cara. Thank you. Okay. Don't move, Principal Palitucci. And I especially like making this announcement. The week before spring break provided an exciting opportunity for other group of Coronado High School students. With the Coronado Orchestra and SUSD Fine Arts Coordinator, Michelle Irwin, please join us now. Come on, New Yorkers. The Coronado Orchestra was invited to perform in the National Orchestra Cup in New York City in March. The Orchestra Cup is an invitation-only competition extended to outstanding high school orchestra ensembles from around the nation each year. With the financial support of the SUSD Foundation and the Scottsdale Charos, and under the direction of longtime SUSD conductor, Mrs. Irwin, our students were able to travel to the Big Apple and perform in Alice Thule Hall at the Lincoln Center. This was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for our students to perform on a world-class stage in front of world-renowned music agitators. As if that was not exciting enough, for some of these students, it was their first time leaving Arizona and their first time on an airplane. The students opened their performance with a high-energy piece called "Afterburner," followed by a beautiful piece featuring Diego Sanchez on guitar. Diego? Then, a lyrical selection called "Lullaby" and closed with a famous Offenbach piece that had the audience dancing in their seats, we're told. We are so happy you were able to have such a great experience in New York, attend a concert at the world-famous Vienna Philharmonic Orchestra, and visit some of the sites, such as the Rockefeller Center and the Statue of Liberty. And what about the Nintendo store? Yeah, I heard that was pretty good. Congratulations on your achievement, and please accept these SUSD Challenge Recognition Coins to commemorate your hard work and your team. You make us SUSD proud. The final celebration I present to you tonight is no less stirring. I invite Suaro High School senior Eva Tejo, Principal Ann Archlenger, and Principal Daniel Milligan to the podium. Let me tell you about this member of the Suaro class of 2023. Eva will graduate from the Scottsdale Math and Science Academy next month, which requires advanced-level coursework in math, science, and English. Also, participation in the STEM-related community service and math and science competitions are required. Eva is currently receiving her Certified Nursing Assistance License through her CTE coursework at Suaro and is the president of the Suaro's Health Occupation Students of America, or HOSA, chapter, and will compete in the Dental Terminology Division of this year's 2003 State HOSA Competition. And she is a member of the National Honor Society and plays both singles and doubles on the Sabercats varsity tennis team. Whoa! Her coach calls her one of the most dedicated and committed players on the team and reports that Eva never quit mentally, even though she's had some really tough matches this season, in which she has compiled a twelve-and-one record in singles play and eleven-two in doubles. She has held down a part-time job at a local grocery store during high school years. As involved as Eva is, she has maintained a GPA above a four-point-oh for most of her high school years. She is ambitious, well-spoken, and a thoughtful leader. Her near future includes studying global health at Arizona State University, and I'm happy to share with you that she will be supported in that journey as the recipient of the Doran Scholarship, a need-based award designed specifically for first-generation Arizona college students to study at an in-state public university. Through its scholarship, the Doran's Foundation for Education aims to instill college-going traditions in future generations of Arizona families, provide financial access and academic support for recipients, and enhance college persistence through unique enrichment experiences. The total Doran Scholarship is valued at more than $100,000 over the course of four years of study. It includes international travel opportunities, an innovation experience, and cultural enrichment events designed to help round out the college experience. This summer, Eva will take part in a special orientation program, as well as a summer bridge experience that will help her prepare for her college academics. Somehow, I don't think those are going to be an issue for her. Eva, please accept this SUSD Challenge Coin. And our sincere congratulations for this amazing accomplishment. We know it cannot be bestowed to anyone better. ASU, look out, here comes your class of 2027. And you're welcome, we did a good job. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Serna, and congratulations to all of this evening's honorees. They are shining examples of what it means to be Scottsdale Unified School District students who embrace the many opportunities we offer for them to extend their learning and to grow. I also want to give a word of appreciation to all of the community members who contributed funds to help ensure that our Coronado Orchestra could make that trip to New York. I'm going to take the last two celebrations myself this evening. So, last month, the first Scottsdale Family Arts Fest was held at ASU Sky Song Facility, the result of many months of collaboration between Scottsdale Unified School District, the City of Scottsdale, Scottsdale Arts, Scottsdale Community Partners, and Arizona State University. The event was a tremendous success, and we are already looking forward to next year's art fest. But we want to take a moment to step back and formally recognize some of the people who were behind the event's creation and presentation. The following people, please come to the podium. SUSD Fine Arts Coordinator, Michelle Irwin. SUSD Auditorium Technician Todd Stover. Scottsdale Arts Learning and Innovation Director Natalie Marsh. And Don Cubian from ASU Sky Song and University Realty. Through the combined skills and creative thinking of these fine people and their organizations, the Scottsdale Family Arts Fest was born, resulting in the celebration of SUSD Fine Arts students, the city's Fine Arts community, and community partners, and our hometown university that you saw on March twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth in Sky Song in South Scottsdale. It was truly a wonderful event, and you all know this, I could not stop smiling from the student choral performances, the orchestral or theatrical groups on the two different stages that were there, walking through the student art galleries, and even looking at which empty bowl to invest in. To see our students' demonstrations of the world-class, future-focused education they receive in SUSD classrooms every day, and their teacher-leader support, was a moment of great pride, and I hope that those of you who were able to attend the Arts Fest felt the same way. There is no recognition coin that is big enough to convey the pride, respect, and appreciation that is due. But instead, we will recognize the work of this quartet of community-minded, student-driven leaders, and present each of you with an official SUSD recognition coin and our gratitude. And I'll be right there to give you the coins.
I just want to quickly say that you need other people to make a partnership happen. We can have a dream, but I can tell you, these people were fantastic. Todd with all the stage stuff, Natalie holding all the mini together, and Don, you're amazing and funding it all. So, I thank you guys so much. Next year, same thing.
And finally, to wrap things up, although he is not able to be here with us this evening because he's on the job overseeing athletic events, want to pass along our congratulations to District Athletic Director Nathan Slater, who was elected by the 5A Conference and the Arizona Interschoolastic Association, or AIA, to serve on the AIA Executive Board. This happened yesterday. The AIA Executive Board is essentially the governing body of AIA, which oversees high school athletics in the state. When Nathan's three-year term starts this summer, he will be, it will be the first time that an SUSD representative has it will be the first time that an SUSD representative has served in this elite high school athletics leadership capacity. This honor is well-earned and recognizes not only Nathan's 29 years of service to our district, but also his 15 years as an AIA Region Chair, and the past three years during which he has served as 5A Conference President. He was also the 2010 4A Conference Athletic Director of the Year. So at this time of the school year, you will often find Mr. Slater setting up timing devices for middle-school track meet, or pacing the sidelines of a high-school baseball or softball game. So the next time you see him, please take a moment to congratulate him on his election to the AIA Board. I received a very nice email from the Executive Director of AIA, David Hines, with the announcement. And the next time I see him, I'll present him with an SUSD recognition coin and our appreciation. And with that, President Stanowski will conclude the celebrations this evening.
At this time, I would like to open up the floor to our governing board members for their reports. I'd like to go first. Dr. Hart Wells.
Your mic. Here we go. All right, well, welcome, everyone. I also want to extend my congratulations to each of the outstanding students and staff that were celebrated this evening. And I also want to extend a belated note of appreciation to each of the district's assistant principals. Last week was AP Appreciation Week, and so please accept my grateful thanks to your dedication for your craft, and, more importantly, to all of your students' successes. As I telegraphed at the last board meeting, and Dr. Menzel just shared, I was planning, and I did attend, the Scottsdale Arts Fest, and it was outstanding, did not disappoint. And if you were like me, then you were probably awed by the exceptional talent that was on display. And I want to wish a heartfelt congratulations to each of the student artists, both visual and performing artists, who shared a bit of yourself through your art with us. And in particular, I want to thank the art teachers, whose hard work and love for teaching was evident in every piece that your students displayed. And one person who was actually celebrated this evening, all of the folks that were behind the scenes that made that happen, to no cost, to the district, by the way, and that was the one person who continues and consistently moves heaven and earth for our support of our Fine Arts Program across the district, and that's Michelle Irvin. And I cannot say enough. Yeah, that program and a lot of our educational programs through the arts would not happen in this district if it weren't for Michelle. So, thank you. I also enjoyed a visit, along that same lines, to the Desert Mountain Library to view the IB art exhibits, which, like all the previous years that I've viewed before, did not disappoint either, and offered a rich display of the deep talent of our students. And the seniors, it was the seniors' curatorial exhibits. If you've not seen these, they're unbelievable. And like all of our students at the Art Fest, who are in the IB art exhibit, through their art, whether it was a drawing, a woodwork, a short story, a webpage design, a garment, a script for a new ending to a play, or a diary, they speak so much truth through their art. Truth about not just themselves, but also about us as a community. Today is Holocaust Remembrance Day, and I can't help but reflect on how I really learned about the Holocaust. Yes, I learned, in the academic sense, about the murder of millions rooted in a group supremacy psyche and the allied countries' collective defeat of that evil. But I'm talking about learning in a way that connects and humanizes the realities of group supremacy. Learning in a way that makes you feel the lesson. It was through the eyes of a 16-year-old who was hiding in an attic along with her family. Anne Frank was just a young adolescent given a diary into which she spoke her truth. And at around the same age that Anne Frank wrote her truth, I read it. And I liked Anne Frank. I felt like she was a lot like me, just an adolescent going through adolescence in all the phases of development that that means. I could identify with her. What I couldn't understand is why, within a few years of her writing her thoughts in the diary, that she would be murdered. And I came to understand much later the why was rooted in a toxic mix of labels, fear, intimidation, hate, and harm, all wrapped up tightly in a craven need for absolute power. But we don't have that in the United States, because we remember. And I am grateful for the school library that enabled me to be introduced to Anne Frank, and I'm better for it. I'm glad that both of my children have read Anne Frank's diary. They are better for it. And I am resolved that your students have the opportunity to meet Anne Frank. They will be better for it, because they too will remember. And with that, I will close by wishing our librarians a grateful thanks on Librarian Day, and thank you for enabling all of us to be better people, to be better neighbors, and to be better citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hart Wells. Vice President Warner has a request to share her report.
All right. So, on March 22nd, I met with Superintendent Menzel for our monthly meeting. While things have been a bit of a roller coaster since January 1st, I thought it was a really good idea to sit down and have a heart-to-heart conversation about unifying our board and our district. We had a very productive conversation, and we both had great suggestions on how to move forward. Later that week, I met with Walt Chandler and his Assistant Principal at Cherokee. I toured the newly rebuilt Cherokee Elementary School, and it looks very different from when my kids were there. We had great conversations about our kids, schools, and effective leadership. I am honored to serve in such a great district, and I am 100% supportive of our principals, staff, and administration. I visited with our Director of Facilities, Dennis Rayler, and he gave me a full rundown on what's happening in his department. And I love his transparency. And now, anyone can go on the website and see where all the monies go when it comes to facility spending. I have met with many parents and a few teachers and community members, and listened to their praises of our schools and concerns. And I find that as people, we all want to be heard, and it's a great starting point for positivity and where we need some work. The board was invited to attend the Student Advisory Board meeting, and it was an honor to attend. Both myself and President Stanowski answered questions by the students, and it was really great to see what their interests are in their leadership in action. Last year, I served on the ELD Task Force, led by our new Executive Director of Elementary Education, Margaret Serna. So it was really great to catch up with her, to hear about all the greatness that has come out of the task force. And our math scores for the kids who are in the program are up 12%, and that is really something to celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Warner. Any other requests for chairing board reports? Okay, then I'll share mine. To start off with, I tried to look through the agenda and notice the gifts that have been given to our district from our partners and organizations that help support our district public schools. And I offer gratitude on behalf of our SUSD Governing Board for the numerous financial gifts bestowed upon us. These include gifts from the American Online Funds, Anasazi PTO, Arcadia High School National Honor Society, the Charos Foundation for their ongoing support throughout all of our campuses, CHAPS charities, DMHS PTO, Coronado Foundation for the Future, Suaro Yearbook. Also, great appreciation to our numerous volunteers who continue to show up to support instruction and the extracurricular, the co-curricular activities on our campuses. This past month, I've had the opportunity to attend many meetings in our community, including supporting our Scottsdale Parent Council, the SUSD Student Advisory Board, as Vice President Warner alluded to, the National Board Certified Teacher Recognition Awards Dinner and Event. I've had the opportunity to relish in the success of our students by attending Mountainside Middle School's rendition of Schoolhouse Rock Junior, the Score Transition Symposium, the SUSD Fine Arts, as mentioned earlier, it was phenomenal, and the IB Arts Exhibit, which also has been mentioned this evening, Chaparral Teen Town Hall, the Desert Mountain Teen Town Hall today, as well as getting a glimpse of our state top seed women's softball team at Desert Mountain High School. I, along with Board Member Dr. Hart Wells, again supported the efforts of the Scottsdale branch of the American Association of University Women, also known as the AAUW, book drive, collecting over 400 books for school-aged children, and delivered them to the Yavapai Elementary School for each child to select a book that spoke to them and bring it home for their keeps. Each year, the AAUW selects a different school to focus on, and this past year it was Yavapai. Shout-out to former Governing Board Member Patty Beckman for her continued service to our SUSD. She and a collection of community volunteers, many of them are here this evening, continue to host what we call Project Prom, that is, collecting and organizing an immense display of formalware for our students free of charge, and that's open to all of our students in our school district. I was told that this was going to be the site of the permanent house of Project Prom on this campus. Yay, thank you, Principal Palitucci, for offering that. That's awesome. Thank you again to our many employees who signed and returned their contracts. It is our intention to continue to support you and show our appreciation for your endless work that you do on behalf of our students. And with that, we will move on to Public Comment, Part 5 of our agenda this evening. I would like to remind the public that open-meeting law permits individual board members to do as follows at the conclusion of the call to public, also known as public comment: Respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body; Ask staff to review a matter; Or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. The board cannot begin discussing something that was raised in the call to the public unless it is on our agenda. If a member of the public levies criticism on a board member and not the district, the board member may respond to that criticism. If a member of the public states something that is untruthful but not critical, I can make the recommendation for future action on that particular item. And if you haven't been here before, and this is your first time speaking during public comment, I will call your name, and then you can approach the podium. At that time, I would like for you to state your first and last name and your association with our Scottsdale Unified School District, and then the time will begin. Do I call them? Okay. Ensuring that everyone has a voice in our district, we have 16 requests to address the board. Normally, we give two minutes. We have a 30-minute time period, but we'll give two minutes to each person. First up is Jeffrey Stefan, followed by Lucy Wheat.
Jeff Stefan, I have two "theybe's" in Cherokee and Kokopah. One of my favorite scriptures is, "Rejoice always, pray without seizing, in everything give thanks, for this is the will of God in Christ Jesus." Our family rejoices that Amy and Corinne are now sitting in front of me. They are spirit-filled with beauty, wisdom, knowledge, and a calling to educate, not indoctrinate. A and C are the answer to prayer from my God who is near, not far off, the God who does wonders, a gracious and compassionate God, the Creator of all things created, and the God that formed you in your mother's womb. I thank all of the board members and Dr. Menzel for serving Scottsdale. Jesus Christ said, "It is more blessed to give than to receive." All of you have many talents, and you choose to give of yourself here at SUSD, which is an expression of love towards us. Dr. Menzel, you must use fundamental academic principles for teaching the kids in SUSD, not materials produced by Marxist predators. We don't want wokeness, social justice, or CRT snuck in a back door. Wokeness is a religion of anger. Wokeness is demonic. Wokeness stokes the fire of hate. For instance, BLM and Antifa have started 570 violent riots, which have killed 25 people and caused $2 billion in property damage. The majority of these domestic terrorists are white Democrats with college degrees. America is in trouble. Now, when the average college student graduates, they come out as irresponsible, lazy, without self-control. They hate America, and they hate what is good, and they want communism. I'll conclude with this: There's only two genders, one way to heaven, and zero climate change. Thank you.
Lucy Wheat is up, followed by Jerry Herron.
Hello, my name is Lucy Reyna Wheat, and I'm here as a mother and an Arizona taxpayer. As I said, my name is Lucy Reyna Wheat, and I am here to speak against the endorsement of school clubs pushing gender ideology. I am the first vice-chair of the Yavapai County GOP, but I am here specifically as a mother speaking for all parents. We used to teach ABCs, now we teach LBGTQA+, the plus meaning minor-attracted people code for pedophiles. I am a conservative Republican, but I am not anti-gay. In fact, I work very closely with a political nonprofit group, LGB Patriots, who have rejected the Q, anti, and all the other ridiculous rainbow pride acronyms. Like many lesbians, gay men, and bisexuals, they have come to realize that gay civil rights have been usurped by sexual fetishes, heterosexual autogynophiles, excuse me, and youth who believe it is hip to be homo. LGB civil rights have also been exploited by well-meaning so-called LGB allies who are, in fact, exploiting lesbian, gay men, and bisexuals for their own social credit scores. Sex is binary. No one is born in the wrong body. You cannot choose your gender and sex. The so-called gender-affirming healthcare that is being pushed by the current administration and the for-profit motivation by the Big Pharma and Big Medicine result in no health and the need for permanent care. Too late, underage youth have been transitioned without the parent's knowledge to become lifelong medical patients with no ability to enjoy sexual intimacy, no ability to bear children, and a life of constant pain and medical complications. This is a Dr. Franken-science, not real-science. Effectively, we are castrating boys and sterilizing girls for social fad and fashion. These gender school clubs are a gateway drug to permanent harm. But there is good news. There is good news.
Jerry Herron, followed by Yvonne Cahill.
and I'm speaking on behalf of LGB Patriots. My name is Jerry Herron, and I'm here to speak against the endorsement of gender fantasy school clubs. I have 12 years' experience teaching both as adjunct and full-time at Trexel University, Philadelphia University, and the now-defunct Phoenix Art Institute. I am also the founder of the political nonprofit LGB Patriots. Our pride colors are red, white, and blue, not rainbow. We are same-sex attracted people, lesbians, gay men, and bisexuals. We are not same-gender attracted people. I scanned through Dr. Menzel's statement December 2021 about school clubs and adherence to protected classes. Race is fact. Color is fact. Disability is fact. National origin is fact. Sex and sexual orientation is fact. Transgender identity is fabrication. We are same-sex attracted people, lesbians, gay men, and bisexuals. We are not same-gender attracted people. I scanned through Dr. Menzel's statement December 2021 about school clubs and adherence to protected classes. Race is fact. Color is fact. Disability is fact. National origin is fact. Sex and sexual orientation is fact. Transgender identity is fabrication. We used to teach facts, not fiction. We used to teach math, science, biology, not emotion. 10 years ago, most of us knew nothing about transgender and transsexuals. 5 years ago, most of us knew nothing about gender dysphoria. 1 year ago, most of us knew nothing about autogynophilia. 100 years empirical research recorded gender dysphoria at 0.001, affecting mostly boys. By 2019, rapid onset gender dysphoria skyrocketed into the 4,000 and 5,000 percentile affecting mostly girls. Why? Because we are teaching it, we are endorsing it, and we are encouraging it, all in the name of your key values, inclusion in the name of gays. LGBT did not and do not give you permission to use our sexuality to indoctrinate other people's children into a sex...
Yvonne Cahill, followed by Patricia Pellet.
You couldn't hear that.
Yvonne Cahill.
Thank you. My name's Yvonne Cahill, and I'm a Scottsdale taxpayer. I've lived in the Scottsdale School District for about 25 years. I came to a meeting on my last, when I was here, I was really shocked when somebody from the audience accused Amy Carney of contacting a news outlet, Fox News, and ruining the reputation of the Scottsdale Unified School District. So I thought, well, I'll just go on Google, my friend, and I'll see what's out there on Scottsdale Unified School District. So let me share some of it with you, because it's not an Amy Carney issue. This is a leadership problem. And so let me share some of these headlines. Ex-Scottsdale Teacher Gets 10 Years in Prison for Sexual Conduct with a Student. Former Teacher of the Year Was Also the Chaparral High School Girls Track Coach. That was in the Republic. Scottsdale United Teachers Viewing Lewd Sexual Images in Views of Students. Not a Fireable Offense. That was March 5, 2023. Scottsdale Unites for Education in the Arizona Independent Network. March 5, SUSD is now fighting parents to retain a PE teacher who was caught looking at what some consider pornography in full view of children. Under Menzel's leadership, Scottsdale Unified Teachers get the green light to watch porn at school. That was an ADI staff reporter on 3/12/2023. Former Teacher Sentenced for Molesting Kids. That was in the East Valley News, October 2011. A former elementary school teacher in the Scottsdale Unified School District was sentenced to Friday to 46 years in prison for molesting a fourth-grade student. Here's another headline. Chaparral High School Employee Accused of Sexually Abusing a Special Needs Child. This is about Nicholas Kloss, and this was a friend of mine's child. I have pages and pages of headlines. This is something you need to...
Patricia Pellet, followed by Georgia Cefeli.
On 3/28, my boy Isaac's school driver with SUSD's third-party transportation reached out to me frantically to inform me she had just returned from a one-month vacation from driving my boy. She was shocked to see he was still riding home with another special-needs girl who had been slapping him and punching him in the face for months, while he just sits there shocked and tear. She, along with other drivers, have reported it to their company. This company notified SUSD's Transportation Department back in February. As always, the response from SUSD to us parents is, this is the first time we've heard of this. Shame on SUSD for this gross neglect of our kids. Kudos to this driver, who is a hero for reaching out to me. The same neglect is just repeated over and over again, and the response is always, we had no idea, as it swept under the rug. Go to scottsdaleunites.com and learn how to document all of these cases against SUSD. Thank you.
Georgia Cefeli, followed by Tiffany Benson.
Hi, Board Members. I'm a taxpayer and a local resident, and I have something I'd just like to read from my phone. Over the past month or so, you have been promoting the students, teachers, parents, and community members to take the Hanover Climate Survey. In the meantime, you requested that they've done this survey for the past few years. You also said that the survey was to gather the perception about the district and our school with which we inform your path forward. The survey had no control measures and reportedly cost $50,000. The data received from this online survey will not be accurate. There is no way to have a reliable sample from a survey whose link was posted over social media and that anyone could take, whether you've been involved in the district or not. They don't even have to live within our state to even have taken the survey, and you could take it as many times as you want. I request the board to look into the money that has been spent on the Hanover research and not use the bogus results in any path forward for the district. Doing so would be harmful to our students, staff, parents, and community, and likely lead to further decline in our enrollment, with nearly $150,000 spent in the last few years. Please discontinue the use of this Hanover climate and Hanover products. Thank you.
Tiffany Benson, followed by Ben Larabee.
I'm Tiffany Benson, and I'm an Arizona taxpayer. So SUSD community members, first, I'll address Christians and conservatives, namely those who put Werner and Carney in office and then disappeared. It's easy to have strong anonymous opinions. It's safe behind a keyboard, but it takes guts and a spine to stand before people who mock your faith. Constantly taking minimal risks or no risk at all is unacceptable. During wartime, it's dishonorable to conserve oneself while fellow soldiers are being ambushed. So we need more people to show up and speak up. Thomas Jefferson's letter to the Danbury Baptist Association is the only historical document containing the phrase "separation of church and state." It never existed in our founding documents. That lie was successfully deployed by immoral people. So we need teachers and administrators to shake off the false pretense of tolerance, openly pray, and invite God into this district. Or you can be polite and morally moderate while lawless radicals turn your district into socialist, genderless concentration camps. It's up to you. Now I'll address the culture of bullying and intimidation coming from this administration and certain board members. Once upon a time, I too was a wounded, controlling, manipulative bully who burned bridges, walked on people, and raised hell to get my way, but I got saved, and I got over myself. I encourage Presidents Sonowski, Member Hart Wells, and Dr. Menzel to do the same. You're not nearly as important as you think you are.
Ben Larabee, followed by Susan Winder.
My name is Ben. I'm a Christian, an Arizonan, and a community member, in that order. I wish to speak tonight about the district's policy regarding gender dysphoric students. Currently, policy allows students to transition at any time, adopt any pronouns they wish, use any bathroom of their choosing, all without the knowledge or consent of their loving parents. Some would argue that not only do these policies protect students, there have been no incidents from these policies anywhere around the country. This is false. Multiple girls in Loudoun County, Virginia, were assaulted by a male student who is allowed to use the female restroom. In Apodomix County, a student was trafficked because guidance counselors withheld her transition from her parents. Instead, they referred her to so-called gender-affirming sites where she met her predator in a chatroom. Now, some of you would still dismiss this, claiming this is just a few incidents, and this is the best policy to have a safe and healthy experience for students at schools. Know this: After transitioning, suicide rates go up. Depression gets worse. Self-harm becomes more life-threatening. Why? For the same reason we don't tell someone with anorexia that they can be healthy at any weight, we you don't affirm that someone with dysphoria can identify as any gender. Affirming something that is not true, does it bring that person suffering any peace? Now, some of you may still dismiss this evidence, claiming I'm making too big of a deal about this. After all, why is it so hard just to use someone's pronouns? Why is it so hard just to affirm somebody's identity? Well, I submit to you that if I stood up and identified myself as a black lesbian and asked you to affirm that identity, none of you would do so. Why? Because it's so absurdly untrue, it's offensive, just as it's offensive to tell women that their private spaces and their femininity must be shared with men, and that any who object are bigots. Thank you very much.
Susan Winder, followed by Rose Smith.
Yes, I'm Susan Winder. I'm a grandparent of two students in SUSD and an Arizona taxpayer. Good evening, Dr. Menzel and board members. This weekend, I had the privilege and the frustration of working with my grandson on a practice test for the AZ Merit Test his math teacher gave him for extra credit. Before I continue, I want to share with you that I have what we call an ABD, a PhD minus the dissertation. Those classes were in curriculum instruction. I only share this so that you know I know what I'm talking about. The privilege of this task I'm talking to was related to working with my grandson in an area of my passion. The frustration was that he had only been taught about 50% of the content of that practice test. The frustration was, in his words, "I know how to do this, but I've never been given problems with this level of difficulty." If you know anything about curriculum instruction, you know you test what you teach and you teach what you test. At a meeting of the officers of the PTAs in the district, Dr. Menzel said, I quote, "The AZ Merit Test is only one measure of assessment." One could say that about the ACT, the law boards, or tests to become a certified counselor. Those words are used because SUSD AZ Merit scores are abysmal, as well as the ACT and SAT scores. You've heard parents talk about that previously here. Not aligning your curriculum with the outcomes is unfair to your students and to your parents. Dr. Hart Wells, at the last meeting, said we shouldn't jump to a conclusion as to why 50% of the students are open enrolled. I think I'm going to take that leap. Scottsdale is one of the top 10 research richest zip codes in Arizona. That means parents have a lot of money and choose to send their students to private schools or charter schools, and their enrollment is not down. If the district does not agree with state standards, then work with Tom Horn's office to change them so you like them. This board and its superintendent are not making the best decisions for our students by doing so. Let me leave you with a question. You have two students, one from here, one from Massachusetts, same equal score, but who do you think...
Rose Smith, followed by Kim Miller.
Thank you. My name is Rose Smith. I'm an SUSD alumni. I have two grandchildren in the district. Board members should be first in line to deny the allegations that SUSD enrollment losses are because of a migration to charters. That is not true. Our decline in enrollment has never been because of the quality of SUSD schools or Dr. Menzel. Per the ADE, charter school enrollment in the Scottsdale area has declined at a rate three to five times greater than our district schools. Local charter schools are not gaining enrollment over SUSD. It is instead because of the shrinking demographic of school-aged children caused by a lack of affordable family housing. It's your job to set the record straight. City data reveals that 5,400 short-term rentals have replaced single-family homes and the families who used to live there. The Scottsdale Housing Market report cites that in January 2023, the median price of a Scottsdale home was over $800,000. Scottsdale has the highest rental rates in the valley, and the luxury multi-unit complexes approved by city council will not attract families with school-aged children. Reports of constant negativity, micromanagement, discord, and distrust is not flattering to this board or our community. The constant banging of the drum of conflict and misinformation does nothing to grow our schools, enhance our community, or attract and retain the most talented educators and administrators in Arizona. Please direct that energy into helping promote and expand our brand as an excelling district with innovative programming. Thank you.
Kim Miller, followed by April Bouffet.
Hello, I'm Kim Miller, and I'm a parent who lives in the Scottsdale Unified School District. I'm here on behalf of a majority of Scottsdale parents who want our school board to be honest with us about what our children are being taught in school. We had a supplemental materials committee since 2021, before Dr. Menzel eliminated it with no notice or explanation. That committee was for parents and school board to have a way to review and communicate on materials that concern parents and students. Erasing this committee is erasing the voice of parents. It only furthers the distrust that parents have for the majority of this board and for the superintendent. The only reason I can imagine for this is that you don't want parents stopping curricula that promotes activism over academics. With so many students falling below academic standards, we parents demand that you start prioritizing the basics so that our kids can function successfully and happily in life. Bring back the supplemental review committee, and parents will start to trust you again. Thank you.
April, followed by Mike Bender.
My name is April Bouffet. I'm the parent of a child currently attending elementary school here in SUSD. I want you to know, my son is thriving in SUSD. I have seen nothing but an age-appropriate curriculum for a first grader with a heavy focus on academics, so much so, I'm the one complaining about all the tests and the homework and all the things he's being asked to do on a regular basis. But as a parent, I will tell you, I am concerned by a number of recent statements, and frankly, the negative narrative from a number of folks in this room and elsewhere correlating our low (quote-unquote) and/or poor (quote-unquote) test scores with dipping enrollment in the district, saying that, and again, I quote, "Families are leaving SUSD in droves." That might be a great media soundbite, but it isn't actually borne out by the facts. If you look at the decline in SUSD enrollment for 2022, 2023, the number that I have seen is 1.7%. That's minus 1.7%. That's not a lot. The year prior to that was 0.6th of a percent. Given the aging population in Scottsdale, given the lack of affordable housing, the picture could frankly be much worse. The negative narrative, I feel personally, detracts from all of the good work that's happening in our district, all of the hard work that's put in by our teachers, by our staff, by our administrators, all of the things that are happening on the ground in our schools. That's all being wiped away by the negative talk and narrative that is constantly being perpetuated here, much of it based on misinformation. It does an injustice to our children, to our teachers, and again, to our staff. I urge everyone to think carefully about what is being said, whether on social media or to the media, about our district, about our staff, and about our schools. Our children and their parents are actively watching and listening.
Mike Bender, followed by Kim McClure.
My name is Mike Bender. I'm a grandparent of two kids in the district. Dr. Menzel, when are you going to start being honest with the SUSD community? You don't believe in the SUSD values of honesty, transparency, reliability, accountability, openness, and authenticity. This is just virtue signaling, looks great on the website, not actual values you live by. You made this clear by your refusal to provide information to two board members in the hiring of principal for Chaparral. Your violation of the policies put the board members in the untenable position of having to make a critical, important decision without having the required information. This is unacceptable. What are you hiding? I call on you now to release all the information, including the anonymous staff reviews. Since the comments are anonymous, you can't continue to withhold the information, claiming you are protecting the staff, so much for honesty, transparency, and openness. We shouldn't have to rely on submitting a records request and hope we get a complete response to find out what is going on in the district. That's not how it is supposed to work. Why is it that apparently only two board members didn't receive the required information despite multiple requests? Did the other three board members get the information, or are they okay with abdicating their responsibilities? I want VP Warner and Member Carney to know that many of us appreciate your standing up for the policies and the process. You are to be commended for pushing back against the power grab by Menzel. Please continue to do so. Dr. Menzel, I want to remind you that VP Warner and Member Carney were elected by this community. The disrespect and utter contempt towards them show that you demonstrate your disrespect and contempt for those of us who elected them. And despite what some have said, we are real stakeholders in the district. You are accountable to the duly-elected board, who in turn is accountable for the community. That's how the process was set up to work. The board is not in place to be a rubber stamp for everything you want to do. The SUSD values include accountability. Dr. Menzel, many of us in the community are going to start holding you and the board accountable. Thank you.
Kim McClure, followed by... Kim McClure followed by Gail Malone.
Hi, my name is Kim McClure. I have two children in the district, and I'm your constituent. Good evening, Board President Sanowski, Vice President Warner, board members, Dr. Menzel and Ms. Wagner. I'm speaking to you tonight as President of Scottsdale Parent Council, and I'm here to invite you and members of Cabinet to attend monthly SPC meetings. As I've said before, SPC offers an opportunity to connect with parents, and SPC meetings are also a great way for parents to connect with and learn about the district. At our March meeting, we heard from a panel of school resource officers. We learned about restorative justice through the Scottsdale Police Department. This program is unique to SPD and serves as a model around the country. The restorative justice program gives kids a chance to learn from their mistakes and has a very high success rate in the SUSD schools within Scottsdale Police Department's jurisdiction. We also learned about Scottsdale Police Department's Crisis Canine Program, the first of its kind in the nation. The dogs have made it easier for SROs to connect with and form relationships with more students. We met Rocket and Copper and heard stories of the canines helping students through tough times so they can get back to being kids and learning. This program is funded by the SUSD Foundation, and we also learned about the ways the foundation supports our students. Thank you, President Sanowski, for attending the March SPC meeting. We hope to see some of you there again soon. Tomorrow, April 19th at 6:00 PM, we'll hear from Dr. Michelle Watt about the role IT plays in school safety and student learning. SPC's final general meeting will be Wednesday, May 9th at 9:00 AM, and we'll be celebrating successes from each of our schools.
Gail Malone followed by Shay Najafi.
My name is Gail Malone, and I'm a community member whose son attended Desert Mountain and Mountainside many, many years ago. I was... Good evening, members of the governing board, other guests, and Dr. Menzel. I was always an active parent who signed up, stood up, and spoke out for all teachers, staff, and administrators who, like all of you up there, have worked so hard on behalf of our kids. I hadn't been to a school board meeting for many years, but attended last month's meeting out of concern over some of the things that were circulating around my old folks' home. I am here tonight because I think it's important for you all to know what you look like to someone like me, who just comes in off the street and is a member of the community that you're representing. My main point is that unfortunately, I saw and heard partisan politics on full display coming from both parents and school board members. It was clear to see, and it is tonight, holy heck, to see the division that exists because of political ideology and party lines. This clearly affects your work. Conservative values are definitely under attack, with two board members being repeatedly called out by name, complete with eye-rolling and facial grimaces. We have to remember, it's the kids who are in the middle of all this, and they're only asking to receive what they've always received. Caring adults as teachers to lay the foundation for an uncertain future. Our country is in the process of undergoing fundamental, radical, head-spinning changes to an old person like me, while moving away sometimes from common sense and decency. Please don't ever forget that your primary obligation is to the children, and we must always discuss important issues calmly and respectfully, regardless of party affiliation or any...
Shay Najafi.
Hi, I'm Shay Najafi. I have two children at Pueblo Elementary and two foreign exchange students at Swallow. Good to see so many people here who have no children and still have the time and dedication to come to our school board meeting, as well as so many other school board meetings throughout the valley. Great to see you at so many of them. First, a shout-out to all of our wonderful librarians. We see and appreciate you, as well as our LGBTQ community. Two young adult novels. In one, a young man, drunk and grief-stricken, over the death of his friend, robs his store and is shot dead by the police. In another, a 12-year-old boy, playing with a toy gun in his yard, is shot dead by a remorseful police officer. Why would governing board member Carney request the removal of one of the books but not the other? One of the novels is about a poor white teen, and it's called "The Outsiders." This book has been read by our students for decades. Her own children have been requested to read this, and I cannot find any evidence that she ever objected to the grisly and tragic events of this novel. The novel that board member Carney finds inappropriate is about a young black boy whose only crime was playing in his yard. This highly acclaimed novel is "Ghost Boys." I quote board member Carney in her letter to the district when she writes, "How will our students of color feel reading this?" I'd like to pose the question, why does Amy Carney, as a white woman from Scottsdale, believe she can determine what a black student might feel uncomfortable with? In light of the recent shooting of a 16-year-old black boy for ringing the wrong doorbell, perhaps a black student would find solace in a book such as "Ghost Boys." In addition, board member Warner has requested banning the studies of rap, rapist poetry, or anything pertaining to abolitionist Francis Ellen Watkins. It appears these two ladies are dead-set on erasing a culture that is not their own. This is not Scottsdale, not the Scottsdale I want to live in, and not the Scottsdale children of color would want to live in.
That concludes our public comment portion of the meeting this evening. And we will move on... Oh, wait a second. Are there any governing board members who would like to make responses to public comment? I see Board Member Carney's request to speak is on. Go ahead. Oh, yes, go ahead. You just had it. There you go.
I just want to, as counsel, remind the board that the only comments that can be made in response to public comment is a direct response to criticism, referral to the superintendent to review an issue, or ask that it be put on a future agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Board Member Carney.
All right, thank you, President Sanowski. I'd like to respond to the last speaker talking about a book that I had asked to be reviewed when I was only a parent in 2021, in the middle of 2021, because I believe that the literature that we assign to our students at school is a great opportunity to provide them with something better and more meaningful than what they're getting on social media and in pop culture and the media today. So you need to know that I turned that book in and another for review, because it's very concerning to me what we're giving to our students to read in the classroom. And it's even more concerning to me that a parent filling out an online request for review of instructional materials can be outed to another parent doing a public records request on them. I also asked for "Ghost Boys" to be reviewed, and I spoke about it at a board meeting even, at the request of parents who were too afraid to put their name on it because of possible retaliation on their students in the classroom. So I thank you for your comment, but I will continue to encourage parents to ask for any learning material, including books, to be reviewed that they feel aren't age-appropriate or up to the standards of the world-class education that we promote.
Board Member Warner, please stop.
I'd like to... Good morning. So I have two things. I'd like to have a discussion about the Hanover Survey at some point to ensure that that's an integrous survey that we're using to further our district. And two, I actually had three things that I submitted on behalf of three parents because they were also too scared to come forward. And regarding the rap poetry, the actual poem from the poetry assignment is really, really good, but the children were given multiple rap songs that they had to choose from to complete the assignment. And this is a special ed student that did this, and it was "Role Models" by J. Cole. You can Google the lyrics real quick, and you'll see why it was a problem. So thank you for bringing that forward. The other one, by the way, was "Paid-for Sex in High School," and you look into that as well. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? I would just like to address one of the comments that was made about two of the governing board members not receiving adequate information or appropriate time to review the information, that I need to correct that information publicly because all of the governing board members receive all access to information, and we receive appropriate input and time to further understand the process leading to recommendations for personnel requests that come to the governing board. So just to clarify, governing board members are all sent the same information and have the same opportunities to ask questions of the administration throughout our district. So just to clarify that. And seeing that there are no other requests to address public comment, I'm going to move on to Agenda Item 6, the superintendent comments. Dr. Menzel.
Well, good evening again, President Sanowski, Vice President Warner, members of the governing board. I want to start by acknowledging that earlier today, the Scottsdale Unified School District Foundation held its fundraising golf outing. I know a few board members stopped by for the lunch before the golfers hit the course. And I just want to express my appreciation for all of the partners and sponsors who helped likely bring in more than $50,000 to support our world-class, future-focused learning opportunities in Scottsdale. Without the foundation, we wouldn't have had things like the Crisis Canines and many of the other things that we celebrate. So today was a good day, and temperature wasn't too hot, a slight cloud cover. I'm not a golfer, but I certainly do appreciate the greens and the people who came out today. Secondly, I just would like to also acknowledge what President Sanowski mentioned, and that is earlier this afternoon, the Desert Mountain Teen Town Hall was held, and we had a good representation, a panel of administrators, both district office and Desert Mountain High School administrators. More than 100 students showed up to participate, so by far, it's the largest in terms of student participation. And while food is provided at all of these, for some reason, Desert Mountain students respond to Chick-fil-A after school, and I think every sandwich was accounted for and then some. But what was better was the kind of questions that they asked. This year, they didn't talk about nutrition services. They had other questions that were on their mind, but I'm always impressed by the thoughtful approach that students have, some practical problems that we can address, and some that are larger systems issues that will take more time, but always grateful to have the opportunity to listen and think about how we can improve the student experience. Speaking of Desert Mountain, I'd just like to remind people who are here and those who are watching that we have our Desert Mountain Town Hall on April 26th from 6:00 to 7:00. It's open to the community for a Q&amp;A period of time, so we'll encourage people to show up for that. We are still taking applications for the Scottsdale Unified School District InFocus Program. Those who don't know, this is an opportunity for interested community members, both parents, business leaders, nonprofit leaders, to learn more about the workings of Scottsdale Unified School District, from business and finance to curriculum and instruction to transportation, food service, safety. You cover the waterfront. School districts are complex organizations, and this is an opportunity for people to spend two hours a month diving more deeply into how the school district operates. I think it's important at this time to also acknowledge Margaret Serna for being designated as a Kindness Star Award for Excellence in Education recipient by the Be Kind People Margaret will be recognized next Friday with this award for her positive attitude and her tireless energy encouraging students to work hard and succeed as a part of the Be Kind People Project's event at the end of the month. So we're very proud of you, Margaret. I also want to point out that on Friday, the Charos Education Banquet, the 36th Annual, will be taking place, where we have a Teacher of the Year from each of our buildings, along with student scholarship recipients, and this year, for the first time, recognition of one of our classified staff by the Charos. And so we're looking forward to that signature event and celebrating our teachers and our students who receive scholarships with the partners that we have in the Charos. And finally, and some of these were mentioned already, but there are a number of upcoming celebrations this week and next. April 16th through 22nd is National Volunteer Week, and April 17th through 21st, I'm not sure how this happened, but Public School Volunteer Week. So let's just say, we're recognizing and celebrating volunteers. We have more than 2,000 parents that are signed up to volunteer in our 29 schools. We have even more volunteers, if you think about the community partners that spend time, effort, and energy in supporting our school district. So a shout-out to all of the volunteers who support our kids and their success. Next week is Administrative Professionals Week, and on April 26th, it's Administrative Professionals Day, so I want to give a shout-out to the administrative professionals that I know are in the room, including Gladys, since it's next week, but thank you for all you do. We couldn't do what we do without you. Next week, we will also be celebrating National Library Week, and April 25th is National Library Workers' Day, and I appreciate those who've already given a shout-out to our library staff. They do important work for our students. Reading is fundamental, and I think that the work of our librarians to give kids access to diverse literature is important. And then finally, April 24th through 30th is National Student Leadership Week. And one of the things that I've noticed in my time working with the Student Advisory Board and engaging with students across our campuses is that we have amazing student leaders. They will be the leaders of the next generation, and I'm really proud of the work that they do to make our community a better place. With that, I'll conclude my remarks.
Thank you so much, Dr. Menzel. We're going to move on to the information discussion items this evening. Up first is early learning update from Dr. Christine Bono. No, I have you muted. There you go.
Yeah, I'm a real whisperer, Dr. Menzel. I've been accused of being very soft-spoken in my years. Good evening, board members, President Sanowski, Vice President Warner, board members, Dr. Menzel, and Ms. Wagner. I am so excited tonight to be sharing about our early learning programs, a quick overview of our programs, and to share all the great things going on in our programs. I wanted to just give a quick shout-out to all the members of our team. So our department is early learning and community education. Tonight, we'll be talking about just early learning, but every member on our team does everything for all of our programs. No one in our department works in isolation, and I'm so fortunate to work with some of the most hardest-working people I've ever had the privilege of working with. So we're going to talk a little bit about this year's programs, and then our programs next year, our enrollment numbers, give you an opportunity to ask questions. So you'll see here, this is this year's preschool. Oftentimes, especially if people are unfamiliar with our programs, you'll find that people use preschool and pre-K interchangeably. We don't. They're two very distinct programs. Our preschool is for students who are going to be three by August 31st, and you'll see here where we offer preschool currently, Cherokee, Desert Canyon, Echo Canyon, Laguna, Navajo, and Pueblo. All of our programs are licensed through the Department of Health Services, through DHS, and they have very strict guidelines for licensing, especially as it relates to ratio. Their ratio for preschool is 1 to 13, ours is 1 to 12. So you'll never have more than 24 students in a class with a certified teacher. I want to point that out because a lot of programs in our state don't utilize certified teachers. I'm very proud that we use certified teachers in our early learning programs for preschool and pre-K, and a full-time assistant. We also have a part-time assistant that comes in and provides prep for the teacher, lunch breaks for the teacher, and for the assistant. So it's a real team effort. You'll see here currently, these are the current enrollment numbers for our preschool. You'll see the wait list. The wait list is a little bit, could be a little misleading, maybe not so much in preschool. When we get to pre-K, it could be a little more misleading, because we do have families who say, "Well, I really want to be at Navajo, but I'll go to Pueblo." So some of these kids could be captured in other programs, but they do stay on the wait list until a spot opens up. Navajo is a little different because it's paid for out of a different fund, it's not tuition-based, so you have to live in the boundary. But that's where we find for preschool our biggest need, along with Desert Canyon preschool. So this is our current pre-K this year. We are very fortunate that we offer pre-K at each of our schools, with the exception of Hopi and Sequoia. My understanding is that when Hopi was rebuilt, they didn't perhaps plan accordingly with space, so they're busting at the seams, didn't have enough capacity for pre-K, and Sequoia has a private preschool that vendors with SUSD to provide a great learning opportunity for their little ones. So you'll see here our current numbers, again, with pre-K, the ratio is 1 to 12 by the state. That's our ratio also. There'll never be more than 24 kids in a class with that full-time certified teacher and the assistant. If you see here, you'll see some of our schools were fortunate enough to have two classes. So Cherokee has two pre-K classes, Cochise, this is, I believe, our second year, second or third year of having two classes. Cochise, this is, I believe, our second year, second or third year of having two classes there. Kiva, we added a second class this year. When we talk about program expansion, I'll talk a little more about that. Pima has two classes. Pueblo has two pre-K classes. And Yavapai, we added another class. When Yavapai opened up their new campus today, or this year reopened their campus, they also have two classes. So again, because we offer so many more pre-K opportunities for students who are turning for that year, the waitlists are a little bit inaccurate only because, for example, I use Cheyenne as an example. Cheyenne's always going to be an overwhelmingly popular program. It's a phenomenal program. They only have one class. They have room for one class. It fills up quite quickly. We'll talk about that registration process. But many people on the waitlist have enrolled at neighboring schools, whether it be Anasazi, Desert Canyon, Copper Ridge, Redfield, Laguna. So they stay on the waitlist. We have a really neat system that the minute someone withdraws, we are able to accommodate the family. We're also really proud, and I'll talk about points of pride in our programs, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we're also able to accommodate our families who have been, who are eligible under the McKinney-Vento Act. So these are families who are finding themselves in crisis, and predominantly this year, it's been a lot of our families at Yavapai through the social services there. We've had room. We make room for those families. We still stay within our ratio, but we're very lucky, again, when we talk about our teamwork, working with Melissa Medvin, working with our social workers to get those students and those families those wraparound services they need as it relates to our early learning programs. So this is our enrollment for next year, and I want to just take a minute to talk about kind of our registration and enrollment process because we changed things up a little bit. So what we've done historically was when registration started, we would have a mad dash, if any of your children have been in the early learning programs in the olden days, prior to COVID. Parents would come here on a cold January morning and line up at 3:00 a.m. And this is not an exaggeration, so I'm sure some people in the room could probably back me up. They would line up, and it would be first come, first served. And our department, we worked tirelessly to accommodate those families, and it went great. We wanted to change things up a little bit because we learned so much from COVID, because we did so much online. So we did the best of both. So starting in last November, we started communicating our process. Everything was updated on the website. It was very easy to find information. We hosted, I think, three parent night town halls via Teams where parents could visit. We had great turnout to these meetings online. Parents could ask questions, learn about our programs, and more importantly, learn about our registration process because it is a little different than that K-12 process, couple extra steps. This year, we also implemented the high priority enrollment groups. Historically, it was first come, first served. So we really wanted to honor those families who live within the boundary, who have siblings at the school, to give them priority, and we got great feedback on using that. It's a lot of extra work, but it's worth it to honor those families who have a history with their kids. You know, they have three siblings at a school. We didn't get to do it 100%, but we really were able to really make that a priority. And then we came, and after we had that registration process online, we notified parents if they secured a spot. We made our waitlists. And then in January, I think it was January 18, whatever that Saturday was, we had a great event at the MDA, and it was definitely a team effort. We had registrars from across the district, all of our community ed and early learning team. We had teachers who were there helping enroll students. We had council, you name it. It was great. And different than in the past, so prior to COVID, when people were getting there at 3:00 a.m., now it was by appointment. So it was really slick. It looked like a DMV. And the best compliment, I think some of you have heard me say, that a parent gave us that day said that it was more slick than a Chick-fil-A drive-through, which, if you know, you know, right? It was great. And we were able to register a ton of families that day who had already processed. They processed their enrollment. They finalized. And now, if you look on our website in real time, you see those enrollment numbers. So for example, the numbers you see here are as of April 11. This morning, I gave a group tour at Kiva, and three families rushed right over to our office to register. So we're able to use those high priority groups in the beginning. Well, now we're first come, first served. So families rushed over today. We were able to get more kids plugged in at Kiva and get them registered. So again, these waitlists, I think I might have already said, many of those kids, I had a mom call today to say, "Where am I on the Cheyenne waitlist?" She's, I think, one or two on the waitlist, but her child's already registered at Anasazi. If a spot opens up for her, we're able to move her in, open someone to Anasazi, and then the dominoes kind of fall that way. So I touched on this a little bit. We have lots of points of pride. I talked about our program expansion, so not only did we open another class at Kiva this year that now is full, almost, so I think we have two spots left. We opened up the class at Yavapai. Historically, Tonalea had one class, so we moved that class over and then opened another class. We are, Navajo next year, we are expanding to another pre-K. So Navajo has a preschool, and then we're using some results-based funds to open up another pre-K to support our families in that neighborhood. We are also, I know you've heard about our program, we are so excited about our toddler program. So for many of you that have some of that institutional memory, we used to be able to serve our littlest kids, our little two-year-olds. We're bringing them back. The program will be at Laguna. We still have plenty of space, but I'm very confident we can build the program, and that will be for students who turn to by August 31. We talked about the registration process. I'm going to go back to Quality First in one second, but we're also looking at a comprehensive curriculum. Our teachers do amazing things with hands-on, experiential, play-based learning opportunities for our kids as aligned to the state standards in early learning. A lot of people don't realize that Arizona has rigorous standards for our littlest kids that require a lot of that hands-on, play-based. We have CKLA, which is that Core Knowledge Language Arts, but we never had anything comprehensive that addressed early numeracy and science and social studies. So we're looking at implementing a program next year through that RFP process right now, and it's still going to be able to offer that hands-on, play-based, but to provide some framework for a brand-new baby teacher who comes in who might need a little more structure and a little more guidance on how do I form my day, to the veteran teacher who can say, "Yep, I see it. I'm able to implement it and run with it and developmentally appropriate for our little ones." So going back to Quality First, I stood here probably a year ago and talked about Quality First and praised Echo Canyon for being a five-star program. Historically, they were our only Quality First participant because Quality First, First Things First, had a waiting list. They received some Extra Cares Fund money, so they were able to open up the application process last summer. So last July, while sitting near a beach in San Diego, I applied for all of our schools to participate, and we were fortunate enough to get, we got that award for all of our programs. And it is a heavy lift. Some will say it's a full-time job, which I will definitely agree. We could not do it without the help and commitment of Shelley Papas, who was our teacher on assignment, our early learning coach, and other people in our office like Laura Valenzuela, who helps with all of our ordering, and Julia in the fiscal office, and Larry with our licensing, and Alisa, and Julia, and Liz. All of those people have their hands in this. So the Quality First process is not a one-and-done. It's very ongoing. It's comprehensive. It starts with getting contacted. Every school has a coach. We're really fortunate. I've heard some districts where you might have 10 schools and 10 different coaches. We're really lucky. We have two coaches, and they're very geographic, and they provide ongoing coaching. Prior to that is the accreditation process. Our accreditation process started before our teachers had the benefit of some rigorous professional development, even about what Quality First was. You know, that really provided some baseline data. This was our baseline year. It was aligned to our KPI of increasing the number of sites participating in Quality First. So every school went through that accreditation process. It's ongoing coaching. We have some incentive funds. We received a lot of incentive funds this year to buy new furniture and new toys and new materials, offer some PD. We're going to be able to pay our teachers and our assistants this summer to come to some really fun, hands-on professional development in June. So I look forward to sharing more about Quality First, but it's really been exciting. And actually, we just found out that Oak, where our office is, I call it Oak Island, but it's really Oak Campus, we just got awarded Quality First there. So they're going to come out this summer and accredit our summer camp program. So I'm really looking forward to that. So again, talking about that alignment to the strategic plan, that Goal 1.5, providing high-quality district early childhood opportunities. We talked about that KPI of Quality First. We have met it, and we're going to exceed it. But when we talk about that percentage of preschool students who demonstrate readiness for kindergarten, we don't have empirical data to really demonstrate that yet. And I say that yet because next year, we will. As part of our comprehensive curriculum, we're looking for a tool that has an assessment, not only for an assessment to measure kids' readiness, but to be able to share with the kindergarten teachers, to exist within our data dashboard, to show how do kids who participate in our early learning programs, how are they better off or prepared for kindergarten, perhaps compared against kids who didn't have the benefit of our programs? So it really helps teachers know, to demonstrate what these kids no one are able to do, so I'm really excited for that. And I also would be remiss if I didn't point out our collaboration with every department, not only within the district, but especially within ed services. We work really closely with Saratorio and her gifted folks. We have three cluster, gifted cluster classes in our early learning, Tavon, Kiva, and Redfield. They house the K5 comprehensive gifted program, and our cluster class kind of feeds into that and really provides students who have been identified gifted with really differentiated learning experiences from teachers who are either credentialed in gifted instruction or have professional development to really understand the learning needs of gifted kids. Similarly, our kids who have been identified as needing some specialized instruction based on perhaps a speech impediment or a learning disability through our Panda program, we have some kids that participate in Half Day Panda and then come to our program as well. So it's definitely a lot of collaboration. It's not been anything that exists in isolation, no silo. So that is, I'm really, really proud of that ongoing, improving our systems to help support all of our kids in all of our departments. And with that, oh, I will tell you before we get to questions. If you ever want to have a great day, come hang out with the three and four-year-olds. So email me, call me. I'd love to come show you the classrooms, but you definitely, you can't not be happy when you just look at those faces. So with that, I'd love to entertain any of your questions.
Governing board members, do any of you have questions or comments for Dr. Bono on this topic? Dr. Hart Wells?
There we go. Thank you, Board President Sanowski. Thank you, Dr. Bono, for this presentation. Very exciting progress over the last year. And as you know, I've been a big supporter of Quality First ratings, so I'm very happy to hear this is really good progress. Do you have an idea of what the kind of, what timeline for accreditation across the district?
Yeah, it's pretty quick. So the first process is, so we got, we found out in July that we had gotten the award. We had gotten chosen, if you will. And school started the first week of August. By the third week of August, our coaches were calling, saying, "Hey, we want to come next week to assess your class." And that can be a little bit, and I know many of our teachers, my early learning staff is watching, and they're going to agree that that was a little, it could be off-putting, but it wasn't meant to judge because they really, the Quality First folks wanted to come in and get that baseline data. They didn't want to kind of give you time to learn all about these tools. The first tool that they assess you on is called the ECCRS3. That's the first tool that looks at your environment, and that's a three-hour, if not more, observation. Based on your score, you could move on to the Class Assessment, CLASS. It looks at your academics, your different developmental learning centers and whatnot. Based on that, then you find out if you move on to class, if you, after the ECCRS, if you move on to class, you don't get your results of those scores until after the whole process. And then your coach, we get the scores and we get what your rating is, and then your coach works with you to look at the high points, look at some of those areas that need refinement, and that document's called their Quality Improvement Plan, similar to what we have with our Continuous Improvement Plan. And the coach, and our professional development for the whole year, whether it be on Early Release Wednesdays or our professional development in June, will be around, how do we align? So for example, if some of the feedback was you needed, and I'll be honest, it's very specific, you need 14 blocks in your block center. Are they hollow blocks? Do they have access to all kinds of material for hands-on for all different types of learners? So you know, you have so many musical instruments, so we went with a fine-tooth comb. And I caution the teachers, don't get bogged down necessarily on what all needs to be fixed. Look at the positives. Keep refining those, and then let's pick a few and build those up.
Was that the impetus for the comprehensive curriculum as well?
Not so much, because I'll be real honest there, not that I haven't been real honest for this whole presentation, but some of the curriculum we're looking at is going to be hitting some more academic, still hands-on, experiential, but Quality First definitely has their opinion. So we're looking at a happy medium. Everything we do is not going to necessarily be all about Quality First. We're going to do what's best for kids. We're going to look at those NAEYC, the National Association of the Early Learning of Young Children, their standards, what they say is best practice, what we know is best practice. So the impetus for that was really because we had teachers at 29 classrooms doing 29 different things, and they're all great things. The teachers are working tirelessly to create these comprehensive lessons and their own assessments and their own progress reports. And I thought, we can work a little smarter and become unified and consistent. And it was really from the teacher saying, you know, we shouldn't have to reinvent the wheel. There are some great programs out there that other districts use, that other, around the state that are lauded for being great, high-quality programs. That was really the impetus. And then also looking at that KPI of how are we measuring? We really needed something empirical and something consistent to measure the kids' readiness for kindergarten.
And what overall is the net capacity increase from last year to next, or from current year to next year?
In terms of enrollment?
Yes.
It's higher mainly because of our expansion.
Okay. And what was that? What is that delta?
So Kiva, 24, 24 kids at Kiva. Yavapai didn't have any. If you think of Tonalea had one class last year. We added another class, so that was 24. We're definitely higher, and I can look at, I could probably, if I look at those slides, compare this year to next. We are definitely higher next year. But last year, I think because we've refined some of our enrollment strategies and practices with having more information on the website, I think we've been able to cast a little bit wider net to our families to make sure they know that, A, that we exist, and what we can offer their child.
I think as a, I appreciate that, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no problem.
I was curious because I'm wondering, you mentioned need, right? Where are the needs? And so perhaps in August, once the new school year begins, we can have an analytics breakdown of kind of what the expansion looked like for next year, how many on the waitlist didn't get in, how much shuffling had to take place, just kind of geographically, where the needs are in the district, to be responsive to the families there.
We really, and I am committed to looking at, especially at that preschool level, in our title. You know, we had some shifts in our title funding, and we worked really closely. I would be, again, remiss, I mentioned gifted and special ed, we're very closely with Margaret Serna and Sean Crozier and our federal grants folks, to look at how can we get the most bang out of the buck. Our title landscape changed a little bit, so we got creative with results-based funding, but really looking especially for preschool because what we often find geographically, we might have families who call us in July, and they wake up and they go, "Oh, I have to get my kid in school." And unfortunately, eight times out of 10, they're out of luck. So how can we be strategic, maybe hold some spots for those families a little bit later, and also maybe expand our preschool, especially in our southern part of Scottsdale?
Wonderful. Last question from me, at least for now. Are there any other, is there any other district school in Arizona that has all of their pre-K, preschool, early learning programs rated by Quality First?
I think so. I believe Higley.
Okay.
I believe there are many districts that got in when Echo Canyon did years ago. They got all their schools in. And I think more so now with my colleagues throughout community education around the state and early learning in the state, a lot of them joined this year. There's a little bit of a difference. So when you were, like Echo Canyon's program, we're able to offer scholarships with this new CARES Act funds. It doesn't, Quality First and First Things First doesn't allow for additional scholarships. There's talks in the future of opening that scholarship piece up, and I'll be honest, that was one of the main impetuses for us joining, was hoping to get some more scholarships, if you will. But I think there are many, many districts and childcare centers. There, I believe there's probably more, and I'll have to fact-check myself on this, but just talking to coaches, there are more childcare centers that are participating in Quality First than perhaps even schools.
Okay, great. Well, this is really great progress. Congratulations to you and the entire team across the board. It's really excellent.
Board Member Carney.
Thank you. Thanks for that presentation. I just have one question on. Do you have any more of the parent town halls scheduled? Do you have any upcoming?
For early learning, no, but we absolutely could if parents have. So once our registration stops, or the bulk of it, so it's still ongoing, like I said, I think we registered up to, I think, three kids for Kiva and a few other places around today. When that bulk stops, it kind of shifts to the schools. They still register with us, but we told even families today that I gave a tour to. Around June, when all the schools start sending out their back to school information, they become theirs. So for example, the Kiva families will start getting information from Principal Gromak and their PTO, and, and we kind of take a step back from that because now they belong to the school, if you will. But always happy to, you know, entertain anyone who would like more information. I will say that we were, again, working with our colleagues. Our folks in IT worked so hard to create some universal email boxes. So early learning at S U S D, community education at S U S D, summer school at S U S D. And we, we meticulously check those so parents have that responsiveness. And so if there's a need, happy to have another town hall to answer any questions people have.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Bono, can you talk about the waitlists? Because it looked, it appeared like sections could be opened. What is keeping that from happening?
Space. So, so are you speaking particularly around like Cheyenne? So mostly space, it's, it's the classroom space. So, you know, we're licensed, so if, if a school had room, if they had capacity, would absolutely entertain that. The caution is if we open, and this is not necessarily empirical, but I will say by looking at our demographic, oh, goodness gracious, sorry about that. Looking at our demographic areas, if we were to, like, for example, we opened a classroom at Kiva last year, and we opened a classroom at Navajo this year, Pima's enrollment, or Pueblo's enrollment is feeling that. So we, you have to be pretty strategic. If we opened, let's say Hopi all of a sudden grew a new building today. I would feel fairly certain that it would negatively impact Echo Canyon's enrollment. Not saying it's good or bad, it's just something to be cautious of and aware of. You know, and I think it, I think as we do a really good job of advertising our programs and getting that word out and trying to get people tucked into those different schools. But really when, you know, it's not like in kindergarten, a section pops because they live across the street since we're all open enrolled, if you will. That, I think that's where it's really a capacity.
My concern is that when some, I don't think anyone likes to be waitlisted. And they'll find alternatives right away. So the waitlist, if the section is open, and maybe we need to be looking at our facility use a little bit different, maybe the, the old Cochees, the, what used to be Cheyenne before they moved down on Viola Linda and like Frank Lloyd Wright area? I know that is one of our facilities. There's, like, maybe we need to be thinking about what's close, where we have space and redirect that traffic. Just an idea, because I know the waitlist people do go elsewhere. And they say, well, I really wanted to get in, but I couldn't. And I think we're really smart to be capturing the preschool families because then they become our S U S D families. And just to note, you know, S U S D chooses to budget preschool and all-day kindergarten. That is not funded by the state. Correct me if I'm wrong.
It's not funded-ish, so our programs are tuition-based. So with the exception of our title, and even then, it's expanded because our title landscape has changed. We're using some creative results-based funds to cover some of those classes that were covered by title. So our families don't have, in our Title One schools, don't have to pay tuition. Our families pay tuition. We had to raise tuition this year even, I know we spoke about that previous meetings. That's commensurate with our areas around town here. But no, our state does not cover, like other states, does not pay for, you know, free of charge.
So I bring that up intentionally because there is a thing called the educators' budget and its proposals of best practices and how do we fund those best practices across our entire state? Again, S U S D chooses to fund, whether it's through payments from families or scholarships, but we choose to support that early learning education because we know the benefits for kids learning later on. However, the educators' budget includes $25 million for comprehensive funding, free accessible preschool, and $280 million statewide for all-day kindergarten, which again, the state does not pay for that. Our S U S D budget includes all-day kindergarten, but again, that is something we choose to invest in. It would be great to have the preschools, the early childhood learning and all-day kindergarten funded through our state budget.
Yes, it would be.
Just making that note, yeah. Okay, I really appreciate it. It's been fun to watch the growth of this. And again, kudos to you and the team.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next will be information discussion item 7B, the Auditor General School District Spending Analysis for Fiscal Year 2021-22. Shannon Crozier.
Good evening, Board President Sanowski, Vice President Warner, members of the board, Dr. Menzel, guests. Tonight, we are taking a look at the Auditor General School Spending Report for Fiscal Year 22. So this is looking at how did we use our funds last school year and looking at how that compared to the state and other districts. This is a requirement that is required out of state statute. It's been done, and I'm just looking at this going, it was 20, it was 2000 through the 20, 2000, 2001 school year, I see a typo there, is when this actually started. So it's happened for a number of years that we've received this report as long, as well as every other district in the state of Arizona. The report is issued on March 1st and is now required to be on the district website, which our report is on our district website and was put up the, the day of the report. The first part of this kind of takes a look at how did we, where the different categories? So the state puts up basically two categories and they're broken down into subcategories within that. So the first one being classroom spending. That first category is going to include instruction, so direct in the classroom. That's going to be teachers, paraprofessionals, anything that is directly in the classroom. Second one would be student support. So that's going to be like attendance clerks, social workers, guidance counselors, OTP, physical therapy, those things, health services. And then the third part of that is instructional support. And so that's going to be professional development, your library, media centers, really what goes into developing and helping teachers to be better at their craft. That all encompasses, so each one of them gets a percentage. The three combined becomes the classroom spending. The next one would be non-classroom spending. So that's going to be your administration, principals, assistant principals, district administration, HR, finance, purchasing, all of those, those areas, as well as elections and technology. Plant services is pretty, pretty self-explanatory. It's going to be your facilities, maintenance, security, utilities, those types of items. Food services and then transportation, again, very self-explanatory. So this first part looks at how did we do compared to the state? And within instruction, the whole category of classroom spending, we're slightly above the state average. We're a little bit lower in instruction, a little bit higher in student support, and pretty even when it comes to instructional support. The other part of that being the non-classroom spending, so administration, lower than state average. Again, plant operations is up, and part of that has to do with how we do things. So there's things that we decide as a district or the board decides as a district that do play into this. One of those things being we have smaller neighborhood schools. That's a choice that our community has made, that's a choice that our district does. And so when you have those types of things, there's higher utility cost. And so that, those are things that will help drive up things like plant, plant spending. The other thing that affects that, and it's one of the things we're trying to address for this next school year, is we've, the last couple of years, offered summer programming at virtually every site within the district. Has some kind of program happening during the summer. And it's great to have those at those, those sites, but it doesn't allow us to kind of close the school up for the summer and save those utility costs. And during the summer, we know it's hot here. And so when you're running that air, you know, air and electricity continually, that plays into it. It's not a bad thing necessarily, but it's one of the choices that we've made as a district that can affect what our plant services looks like. Again, food services, transportation, we're actually lower than the state average, although we are also always trying to keep those down as well. So when we look at what happened between fiscal year 21 and 22, we had a change within instructional spending that is abnormal for us. And it, it did, it decreased by 2.6%, which, I'll be honest, my first reaction, I saw that was, oh, my gosh, what happened? And so we started doing a dive into why, why did that go down? Because we gave raises to teachers and to, to all employees. So what would have caused that to really, to go down? And so we started looking into that. And there are some things that by just looking at the report, you can naturally deduct, okay, that makes sense. There's some things that we had to dive into a little bit more to say what happened. The first thing is that we had an increase of teachers in their first three years. So as our more veteran teachers have chosen to retire from teaching, and they've been replaced with teachers who are in their first three years of teaching, there's a reduction in cost there. It just, having more teachers in the first three years of their, of their career within teaching is naturally going to reduce the cost or the amount of money that's going into the classroom. It's not that we're not paying our teachers more. It's literally because they're in a lower first three years of that, that education. And that actually increased by 4% from the previous year. So that's a pretty significant increase in the number of teachers that are in their first three years. The second thing that happened is we actually reduced certified teaching staff. And there's a couple of parts that played into that. In fiscal year 21, we were coming out of COVID. And so we were getting back into the classroom where a lot of districts were actually closed. To make that happen, we had to have spacing. And that was a requirement to be able to even come back into the classroom, was that you had to, you needed to have three, three feet of space between the students. So to be able to accommodate that, as well as to accommodate, we had a significant increase in the number of students who chose to go to Scottsdale Online Learning. We had increased, we, we brought in more teachers, we brought in more teaching staff. When those requirements are not into play anymore, it's not that we got rid of teachers. We just didn't, you know, through attrition, we just didn't fill as many spots. We reduced the FTE. And then secondly, we do know that unfortunately, ADM has decreased. And as ADM decreases, that also plays a part in how many students or how many teachers you're going to have in the classroom. So that's part of what played into that reduction. And you can even see that when you look at the AG report, it shows that in 21, our ratio for student to teachers was 15.7. And then prior, and then for 22, it was 17. So you can tell we, I mean, it increased, although 17 to 1 is not a horrible ratio. That's a good ratio actually for teachers. And I was looking at some more to look at what was it even before COVID? And before COVID happened, it actually was 17.2 to 18.3 was the ratio we had. So where's we to reduce that FTE? Some of that, I think, is putting it more back in line with where we had been pre-COVID. So that also played a significant impact in why that number would decrease. A third thing that had happened is that during COVID, we had changed when performance pay was paid to teachers. So the classroom performance pay based off of the 301 monies had been based where you had to do part of it with, was based off evaluations, part of it was based off of state testing. Because of that, it was paid in the fiscal year after you earned it. So you get the money in 22, you're working towards your performance goal in fiscal year 22. But because evaluations don't come out until school is done, and the testing didn't even come out until, or scores didn't even come out until closer to November, that payment after COVID wasn't made until fiscal year 23. So what happened is in 21, we paid all of it in June because there was no test scores. Then we get into fiscal year 22, which is what this report is based off of, and we didn't pay any of it because it was all paid in fiscal year 23. And I will tell you, in 21, that amount was $4 million. For fiscal year 22, which was paid out in 23, was over $6 million. Had we paid that, like we had been paying in the past, you would have seen a huge, that would have played a huge impact into the dollars in the classroom. Then the other thing that happened is we didn't do a textbook adoption in 22 for some reason. I think partially because there's a lot going on. And so when we've been doing textbook adoptions every single year, and those adoptions are several million dollars, and then you don't, that's a, that's a loss of, so we looked at it, it was over, it was close to $2 million that, you know, we had been spending in the classroom with textbook adoption, and then we just stopped. And so because that wasn't there, that again, also reduced how much was in the classroom and that, and what we were spending. And then the last one is a small dollar amount, but what I found in looking at this is things add up. And so during COVID, the state was paying out unemployment. And they were paying it out to anybody and everybody, whether it was accurate or not. And unfortunately, there were a lot of fraudulent claims. There were a lot of fraudulent claims for people who literally, I mean, I can tell you almost everybody in my office, I think because our names are online, supposedly turn in a, unemployment. And the guidance from the state and what we're, and what we were told is, you've got to pay this and then fight it. So unfortunately, we had to pay it, which impacted fiscal year 21. And now we've received so many credits, we didn't pay it at all. We paid no unemployment insurance last year because we have so many credits from the state from over, being overcharged during the COVID years. Again, when you're paying several hundred thousand dollars for something or more and then don't, it makes an impact on, on that spending. So I think part of that to take into consideration is that we are dollars, we are focusing our money on the classroom. That's our number one priority is our teachers and educating students. That's what we do. However, sometimes things that are within our control and some things that aren't within our control can impact how much we spend, and that changes how this report looks. So one of the things I would say is every year, you're going to see changes within the different categories. That's just going to be the nature because of where things fall. This is a little bit higher than I would have wanted to see of a loss. But again, there's, there's some pretty significant financial reasons that played into that that I don't think will be an issue this year. I know, I think every other week, Kim gets a call from me saying, are you sure we're doing this, the science textbook? Is this going to, is this going to happen this year so that we have that money? And we're, we're spending the same, we're back to our normal practice within the 301 performance pay for teachers? So hopefully, this is corrected for the fiscal year 23. Looking at some of the other changes, our student support increased by 1.2%. That really came into, the state gave grants to be able to use for social workers. And so because of that, and the additional funds that went into the area of social workers, that increased by 1.2%. Instructional change or instructional support, really no change, stayed the same. Administration did increase slightly by 0.4% or 0.4%. We, we had several staff members who again, retired from the district and is, or left the district. And as a part of that package, depending on how many years you've been here or their classification, there's payouts for vacation and sick. And, you know, we had a principal that had been here for a considerable amount of years. We had an assistant principal who had spent, I think both of them had spent their entire, you know, careers here, so they had accumulated quite a bit of vacation and leave. We had several cabinet members who again, left to become superintendents at other districts or do other things. And so that played a part into the administrative change. Plant operations, really no change. And then food services increased by 0.6. And I think this one, if you've gone to the store, you understand why this one has gone up. Unfortunately, food just costs a whole lot more than it used to. And so that played part into it. And then we have, you know, students are back from COVID and they're eating, and that's great. But those things all play into it. And so that was part of the increase there. And then transportation increased. And a lot of that has to do with the bus, the bus driver shortage, which seems kind of, okay, you are short drivers, how come that would make your cost increase? But because we're short drivers, we are contracting out way more services than we ever did. Athletics is almost constantly buying the charter buses for athletics. Those are expensive. Field trips, we're not able to get bus drivers for field trips. A lot of the field trips now are having to get chartered buses, which can, they cost way more than what our own transportation could be. We're having to contract out driving services for our special needs students because we just don't have enough drivers to even fill, we don't have enough drivers to fill the spots that we have and the routes that we have. So our staff is constantly out, like even the office staff is constantly out driving. That also means that the staff we do have are racking up a lot of overtime hours as well because they're taking any, I mean, anything we can get them to drive extra, they're doing. And so we actually have drivers who are facing that, you've driven too many hours this week. You literally cannot take any more routes. So because of that, the overtime, the charges, the charter buses and the contract services, unfortunately, also increased our transportation costs. So kind of looking at the next steps, we know the performance pay for certified is going to be hit is in this fiscal year 23. So I think that's going to be a big reflection. We know we're looking at a textbook adoption. There were significant raises that went out for this year. So I think that'll play a factor. Our teacher experience index has increased, so that's an indication that the experience Our teacher experience index has increased, so that's an indication that the experience of our teachers has increased some. So I think that'll play a part into it. And again, we, we try to monitor this stuff all the time, constantly look at what's happening and where are things going to land. Some of it is hard to tell until we get to the end of the fiscal year, but we do still monitor to see where we are. I think next year, I think the report that'll come out showing for fiscal year 23 will show more favorable numbers for us. I think there's a couple of things that unfortunately happened in fiscal year 22 that just didn't, didn't work out the way that we would like it to show for classroom spending. But I think if you look at instructional spending was down, overall, the, the classroom dollars for our district were doing better than the state average on that. And so we want to continue to work on that and put in a business on that, but that's kind of what happened for 22. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you so much, Shannon, for this comprehensive report. I wanted there to be a clear explanation, not just to this governing board, but also to the public, how these fine details can make a big difference with our budget. And I know our priority is classroom spending and supporting what's going on in the classroom. So I do appreciate you going through and identifying what those changes have been. Thank you. Dr. Hartwell.
I think I got it. Thank you, Board President Sanowski. Thank you, Shannon, for the presentation. I know I asked for this at the last board meeting, and I very much appreciate you going through the underpinnings of these numbers, because just a first glance at the numbers, one may come to a cursory conclusion that isn't necessarily supported by the information that's underneath it. So I appreciate you sharing it. It was important. And just to confirm, some of these factors that contributed to the decrease in instructional spending, this is using the calculation, again, of the Arizona Auditor General, which is a little bit different than some of the other reports that come out. You don't see those being influential for the fiscal year 2023.
Dr. Hartwell, no, we don't. I mean, obviously, the performance pay was, has been, is back in there. We fully anticipate there being a textbook adoption that we know will be a couple million dollars, hopefully will take place this year. Obviously-
Oh, it's going to.
It's going to. I ask a lot, is that happening?
Those chemistry books are coming, right?
So I think those are two factors that definitely will play a role into it. You know, if, unfortunately, if, as our more experienced teachers hit those retirement years and are retiring, they're brought in, that's not a bad thing to have younger teachers that are, have new ideas and, and, you know, that's not bad, but that does make an impact. That's a little bit harder to control, because we're going to hire who's the best teacher for it, that position, but that's a little bit harder to control. But I think as our teacher experience index did go up slightly, but did go up, that's an indication, at least, that, you know, we have teachers with more, a little bit more experience, at least above the average in the state of Arizona.
I appreciate that, thank you. And I realize that you can't commit to certain events that you can't control, and I don't think anyone blames folks after the turbulence of the pandemic, that you might want to be able to be done for a little bit. So I get that. There are a couple of components of the changes that impacted the instructional support, though, that do seem to be things that could be reviewed by the administration, in particular, the leave payouts and those kinds of components don't have to be structured the way that they're structured, if anything, for this reason. If those are the kinds of substantial hits that the budget's going to take, you know, I think it's appropriate to review that. Thank you.
Board Member Warner.
Well, we're good. Hi. So thank you for your report, and I have two questions. One is regarding nutrition services. Are all of our spots filled, or do we have vacancies at any of our schools or facilities for nutrition services?
Oh, we have lots of vacancies within nutritional services.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how are we operating with that?
All hands on deck is really how they're operating. So I can tell you, at any given day, the office staff within the nutritional services is out managing schools. The staff that we have at our schools, they are phenomenal. They call them senior team awesome, and man, they earn that title because, I mean, you can go into a school and there's two workers, and they're serving, and they're collecting or, you know, doing, if they need to charge or tracking how many. So you essentially have one person serving and one person scanning students through. And I, that's, I don't know how they do it, those, those, those employees have to be pretty exhausted by the end of the day. But yeah, they are stretched thin, and they are, like I said, all hands on deck.
And are the funds allocated for in the budget, the ones that are not working, that we don't have, the non-existent ones?
Great question. So actually, what this report looks at more than just MNO dollars, it looks at almost all of our funds. So it impacts more than just our MNO budget. For food services, they're entirely self-sufficient. So, and they actually contribute about a million dollars back to the district through indirect costs. But, so they, but they have the budget for those, those spots, they would love to get people in those spots. They've talked about some different plans on, and ideas to test out, to see what we could do to get people in those, those positions. I think raising the minimum, that our lowest staff members earlier this year made a difference, because for a long time, you could go to Chick-fil-A and get a better salary than what you could with us, or McDonald's, or. So I think that's made a difference, but yeah, she's got that budgeted, it's just, it's just not being spent.
Thank you. And one more. So transportation, off the top of your head, or if you can look it up, what is our hourly pay for transportation?
It's in the $19 range per hour for a bus driver. We have done studies to see, are we comparable to other districts? And we are. We actually, last year, tried bonuses, so if you, well, one, they get, so we give a longevity stipend to our drivers anyways to retain them, but they actually, we actually tried a kind of a, if you get somebody, you know, if you refer somebody, or, or if you're new, comes a signing bonus type thing to try to get folks in, and had very little success with it. We are going to try again, we're, because we are very nervous about next year. We've, we've got several people retiring this year, so we're going to try sign and drive events again. The issue is, driving a bus is hard. It's really hard. And there's requirements that you have to have above, just, I mean, it's not, it's a CDL license, but special endorsements on top of that. And driving a, you know, big old bus with 60 kids on it through our streets is hard. So those are, we're trying, but those bus positions are really, have really been difficult. And it's not just us, it's, that's a nationwide issue that we're facing.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
And I do want to follow up on that, because we, we did decide as a board in the past to put some mileage incentives for our food service workers. Like, we're open to trying whatever it's going to take. I do like the big signs that are on the campuses, I notice those, driving through the neighborhoods, hiring nutrition, food service workers, or transportation, or whatever. Like, I, I understand our communications department and our HR, they're, they're working hard to do this, but you're absolutely right, Shannon, that these work shortages are a national issue, and a lot of the contracted services has become standard mode of operation for many school districts throughout the nation.
Yeah. And unfortunately, it's not the best of what we can, you know, we, we want to offer more and better.
Sure. It's harder to control the quality when you're outsourcing your services.
Absolutely.
Okay, so if anyone knows anyone who's looking for a job, but we're always hiring, right? Got to put those plugs in. Again, thank you, Shannon. Seeing that there are no other comments or questions, we will move on to 7C, which is a first read of governing board policy, BEDF, regarding voting method. And Jennifer McLennan is going to support this discussion. I had asked that this be brought forward. I feel it's really important for us to continue to clarify our roles as elected school board members, and, and check that we are continuing to fulfill our fiduciary responsibilities. As was stated here earlier in, in this evening, you know, we are elected, and that means making decisions, and they're not always easy decisions to make. So I really do support the, you know, the comments of appreciation. We don't do this work for appreciation, we do this to move our district forward. So voting is one of those things. So collectively, we are charged with making decisions through votes. And Jennifer, do you have, you have it up there? Thank you, good. So the red is the recommended additions to this particular policy. So at this time, I'd like to open it up. You can, you guys can all read to see what the suggested additional language is. Board Member Carney.
There you go.
Let me try that, hang on. Just, no, just wait, yeah, I'll get it. Here we go.
Okay, we're going to blame you.
Okay. Thank you, President Sanowski. So I'm just curious on what is the impetus to change this policy?
Well, as you can see, it really identifies what a vote is. I know in the past, I've asked for clarification for the term abstention of a vote, and an abstention is not a vote. And in looking through city practices, city governance practices and other school boards, I think it's important for us to define what a vote is and the, the purpose of that. So as it says, votes on all motions and resolutions should be, shall be an aye or a nay. Board members may also abstain from voting. It says that, okay? And then you go down to the bottom, and the addition would be, when a quorum is present, a majority vote of the votes cast, ignoring abstentions, is sufficient for an adoption of any motion, whether it's a approval or a deny. So to clearly identify what our roles are and what the votes mean.
So I feel like this is directed at us, board members who have abstained from some votes, and there've been, you know, there's been instances where I'm not sure if I'm a yes or a no, because I haven't had the proper information. So therefore, I abstain from a vote because I don't have the information to make an informed vote. So with this change in policy, are you trying to take away that, the privilege of neutrality from board members?
No, it states on here, you can also abstain from voting. However, there's something that, that I've thought of in looking at this, that when we bring this to the second read, I'd like for us to consider that the addition at the end of where it says in that first paragraph, voting, and then there's a cross out, or abstention. So it would read, an abstention is not a vote and should only be used when an actual conflict of interest pursuant to governing board policy and/or Arizona State statute exists. I'd like that to be added for consideration. I thought it was very appropriate in the past to abstain from voting if you weren't part of, like, there was something in the past where was, that happened the previous board. To me, that makes sense that you'd abstain from that, not necessarily a conflict of interest, but you really weren't part of that initial decision-making. But to clarify, the, an abstention is not, I'm not ready to vote, an abstention is, there's a conflict of interest. Because, you know, if you're, if you're thinking you're, you don't have the information, then, and if you don't want to motion to move forward, that would be a no vote, as I see it, if you don't want something to move forward.
Okay, so board members that have come before us have had the opportunity to abstain and have, have used that practice and didn't have policy changed on them. So I'm just wondering why we're trying to do this now.
Can you give an example? Can, yes, go ahead, Dr. Menzel.
So I appreciate the question. And so it's not only our district that's seeing this happen, there was a district on the west side of the valley where there was a question about whether or not a motion carried. They had a quorum of the board present, I think there were four. And so under this policy, the question about what does an abstention mean, in Robert's rules and in some other environments, an abstention goes with the majority of the vote, so it would theoretically carry. The recommendation here isn't that, but a 202 vote, let's say four members are present, under this policy would pass because the two abstentions aren't counted as votes for the total, so a majority of those casting ballots would, would mean it was approved. Current policy is, is unclear about that, which is why there's the clarity here. A 2-2 vote doesn't pass because that's, it doesn't have a majority of, of those voting. So that's, that's really, when you look at the, the impetus behind the change, is that it's not so much about the abstention and denying the opportunity to do it, it's just what's the impact on carrying or not carrying a matter of business in front of the governing board? Is that fair, Jennifer?
Madam President, Dr. Menzel, yes, that's correct. So the language at the bottom of the policy that you see is taken from Robert's Rules of Order. The governing board has authority under 15321 to adopt its own rules of order. This board has not adopted Robert's rules, but this would clarify your governing board policy to make it clear that abstentions would fall, if a majority of those present carry the motion, then the abstentions would not prevent the passing of the motion.
Dr. Hartwell.
Thank you, Board President Sanowski. I actually was going to ask for a specific example, because I think it's just easier to apply the policy as, as you're proposing here. But as I understand this, and to be responsive to Board Member Carney's question, there's no prohibition from abstaining in this policy proposal. Ms. McLennan?
As, as drafted, correct. I understand Ms. Sanowski is proposing language that would state that an abstention could only be initiated if you have an actual conflict of interest. I have seen that in other city codes, including, for instance, Fountain Hills has language like that, where the, this board could constate that you cannot abstain unless you have a conflict of interest. That currently isn't in this version. I understand that Ms. Sanowski would like that added. But as this policy stands now, any board member may abstain.
For any reason?
For any reason.
Okay. But the, the clarification that's being, that's in red right now, that the community can see, is that the abstention is really just, you're taking yourself out of the decision making entirely with an abstention, and therefore, of the voting members, that's what counts in towards pass or no pass?
That's exactly correct.
Okay, so it makes the abstention neutral, as opposed to a no vote, which is what we experienced a couple of months ago. Okay. Thank you for the clarification, Ms. McLennan.
Board Vice President Warner.
So I actually brought Robert's rules, President, for a lot of the, the ways that we vote, though we don't, we don't have specifically this adopted. And so there is precedent for abstaining due to not enough information. Historically, that is something that's happened in our district for years and years and years. And according to Robert's rules, we do have a right to, any board member does have the right to abstain, particularly when there's not enough information to make a decision on a yes or a no. So with the language on here, I just wanted to point out by, that the votes cast ignoring abstentions, you're essentially casting aside the vote and, and taking that away from somebody who may not have the, all of the information by ignoring it, and you're also ignoring the, the voters, the people that elected us to be here. And I will use an example. I did abstain at the, I think it was the last board meeting, we were voting to give you instruction to act on the behalf of the district. And maybe a recusal would have been better, because I was, I was involved in what, what was the lawsuit. And I just didn't think of it at the time, which was, maybe probably would have been better than abstaining. But again, I'll just reiterate, this is silly, and this has nothing to do with our children. And again, casting aside board members' votes is just not right. So thank you.
I think this does have everything to do with our kids, because we are tasked, elected by the general public, to make decisions for the best interest of our district at large. So everything that we do here should be focused on our kids. So when we make votes, we are focusing on decisions to move our district in a direction we see benefits our students. Dr. Hartwell. Go ahead, do it again. That's okay. Just click on yours, and I'll turn yours on. Why is it flashing? Here we go.
Okay. You have to transfer it over?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay. So, I wanna respond, because I think there's some, that was a misunderstanding. As I'm understanding, this language that's proposed, abstentions are not being ignored necessarily. You, by abstaining, are not voting, yea or nay. So, an abstention is you taking yourself out, for whatever reason you wish, taking yourself out of the voting. And so, if you sideline yourself, again, there's legitimate reasons to do so, then the folks who are voting, that's what should count. This isn't a comment or assigning a motivation to anyone. I don't, at least the language that we're looking at here. It's just literally defining what the impact of an abstention would have on a vote. And the impact of an abstention, if you really don't wanna weigh in, yea or nay, should be nothing. That's the neutrality position that you asserted. So, I don't, this has nothing to do with silencing people. You're choosing to not participate in the vote. I don't mean you personally. You, person abstaining, are choosing to not participate in the vote. That's your choice, okay, but it's not everybody else's fault that you're doing that. That's your choice. So, it shouldn't stop people from getting paid. And I absolutely believe that this is a fundamental issue we do need to tackle, because I think there was some confusion when this happened, because it hadn't, well, it hadn't happened, we were on the board. So, I appreciate the effort to try to clarify efficiencies, impact effectiveness, and effectiveness of the governance of this district impacts our kids. So, thank you.
So, I would add that there is a mechanism already in policy to address the issue. If a board member feels there's inadequate information to make a decision, and it's a motion to table. And we have exercised that many times in the past, when the information was inadequate, or there were more questions that needed to be researched. And so, we have tabled agenda items. So, there's a difference between tabling an agenda item and how you count votes or not votes. And I think that's why this is important. The abstention is actually a decision not to vote. And so, this just clarifies that that's a non-vote, and that something in, when we're having a meeting, and if there were five people, like tonight, and we had two yeses and three abstentions, it would not carry. I mean, think just about the mathematical consequence. A majority of those voting, well, actually, would it carry?
Say that, say that again.
Yeah, no, now that I'm thinking about it. Majority of those voting, if you have three abstentions, that means you have three no votes.
It would carry.
And it's, so, 1-1 wouldn't carry, but a 2-0 would.
Correct.
So, in that environment, we have a mechanism for something to be tabled, if, if the governing board needs more information and time to consider a recommendation that's properly before the board. But this, this clarifies, when you have an abstention and the situation like we did before, on a 2-0-2, that the matter would move forward.
Vice President Werner.
So, the challenge with, no, the challenge has been that there's been a lack of information. That's in the, well, four months that I've been a board member, that has been quite the issue. And you're right, no one should ever be affected, or have their paycheck affected by this. And when that vote happened, that was actually not because of an abstention. So, anyways, I've spoken my piece. Ignoring an abstention is just silencing and ignoring a vote for a board member. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Please read that it does say, "Board members may also abstain from voting." So, it's not silencing anyone. It's clarifying a yea, a nay, and abstentions don't count for or against an item or an issue or a motion. To clarify that. Dr. Hartwells.
Okay. Thank you, Board President Sanowski. I want to make it very clear, again, that is a misunderstanding. The plain reading of the language is if you are abstaining, with this modification, this amendment to policy B E D F that's being proposed, as is, not with the additional language that Board President Sanowski had indicated, means you, by abstaining, abstainer, whoever that is, is silencing yourself. It is not the rest of the board or the policy silencing you. There are legitimate reasons to abstain, and I have myself. But it is not a means of anyone victimizing you. And I wanna make that very clear. Thank you. Also, I'm just gonna add, because this keeps coming up. The last vote, where the payroll wasn't approved, because we had two abstentions and two yes votes, and we, it was determined that it didn't pass, that window of the day that that vote was taken, and the day, how many, five or six business days later, where that vote was taken again, there wasn't one crumb of new information that came from the administration on the merits. So, I wanna be clear to the community about that.
I see other microphones on. I, this, okay, this is a discussion, and this is not something we're going to vote on tonight. So, if you feel like you need to give additional information to council, we can, we're not gonna vote on this tonight anyway. So, are you guys okay with just moving on then? Okay, we'll do that. Okay. We're gonna move on to our consent agenda, and items were requested to be removed. So, I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there a second on that motion? Oh, hang on. I need to, hang on. I need to make a couple clarifications beyond the polled items. There's a clarification of the, one of the out-of-state trips, if you guys can, it's in your personnel packet. It's 8O. It was for the Calculus Camp Prep, the AP Test Prep Experience. Arcadia had a missed date on there. It was published wrong. It should've been 4/14 through the 16th. That's the corrected date, just letting you guys know that.
Instead of to the 29th, you know, that would've been a very long Calculus Camp.
Yeah, that would, yeah. So, that was a mistake in the date. And I also wanted to bring to your attention 8E, which was our personnel report, and to remove there, there were some duplicate entries for coaches' last name, Philip Bostrom, Lepeta Slovis, and Mamina. That was a clerical error, and employees will only be paid once for the work that they provided to our district, that they were receiving stipends for. And so, not only is, there's some clarification on items that you received with, because they were typos, but making a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Hartwells seconds that motion. All in favor to approve the consent agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
And I believe I heard five affirmatives. So, that motion to approve the consent agenda as amended passes 5-0. And now, we will move on to the polled items. And the first one polled was by Board Member Carney, and that was 8N, approve the renewal of Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, with Greater Phoenix Educational Management Council and Arizona Educational Management Council. Board Member Carney.
Okay, great. I've just got some questions on this. So, would that be Shannon? Who will be answering? It'll be, it'll be you? Okay. Okay, Dr. Menzel. I've got three questions that I'd like to ask. So, first, I wanna confirm, I'm a little confused. I, I think that I have this right. So, tonight, we're being asked to approve a five-year agreement at a minimum cost of over $50,000?
So, the, the membership fee is $10,094 at the present time. And so, that number does get reviewed every year by the, by the GUPIMAC Executive Committee. Those numbers haven't changed a lot over time. So, I can't guarantee that they won't change at all. But that would, over the five-year life of the agreement, it would be $10,000 and some change per year, yes.
So, approving this tonight is approving a five-year agreement. But it's concerning to me, because we've never done this in the past. It looks like we've never approved anything beyond a one-year agreement, beginning in 2019.
Jennifer might be able to speak to the original IGA?
Ms. Dr. Menzel, Ms. Carney, I believe that the other agreements were multi-year agreements, but I, I don't know.
I have them right here.
Okay. I don't, I have not researched that question. But I know that typically, the agreement for the Greater Phoenix Education Management Council is a multi-year agreement.
Well, the board has only approved, in 2019, they approved a one-year only. Same 2020, they approved a one-year only. I could find no information on the past two years. So, I'm not sure. Dr. Menzel, could you tell us how it was approved the past two years?
We can review that issue, but I don't know the answer to that question. So, I know that we had the paralegal Louise Quazada pull up data as to when it was first approved, and that was in 2019.
Right. Okay. So, in 2019, it was approved for one year only. 2020, it was approved for one year only. And tonight, we're being asked to approve it for five years. So, I'm just concerned about that. And I just wanted to bring that to our attention. And then, I wanna know, are there any additional funds on top of this amount that the district pays for superintendents or others throughout the year to attend workshops or other meetings? Are there additional funds that the district has to pay for this organization, for this council?
Not that I'm aware of. So, outside of the travel costs to where the meetings might rotate, and, and even then, I don't put reimbursement for mine. I don't know about the other members. There are three, three divisions. There's a superintendent's division, there's a business officials' division, and a curriculum and instruction division. So, these are the membership costs. The other things that are associated with that professional learning don't require additional expenditure by the district.
Okay. Because, for example, I saw that there was like a fee for the Fall Superintendent's Workshop. So, I just would like to see what additional fees are for, on top of, you know, what we're bringing.
You know what? We'd have to go back and look at that to see. So, there, there are some workshops where they, they may have rental fees associated with the venue, and they're providing food. So, they may have a de minimis charge. So, I'd have to go back and look at that.
Okay. So, I feel like we need to table this item, because we, there's a lot of information, I think, that people don't have, and we need to have the correct information. So, I'd like to make a motion to table this item.
A motion has been made.
A second.
And Vice President Werner seconds it. All in favor to table. Can I just ask a clarifying question? What impact will this have if we table this right now?
So, so, I actually think it's a good idea to table. We don't have to have it done tonight. We need to get it done by the end of the fiscal year. And, and I wanna ask Jennifer, if we can, when we're reviewing the IGA, look at the exit provision. So, to Board Member Carney's point, a five-year IGA doesn't give me heartburn, but I would like to be able to exit for any reason at the end of each year. So, you're, you're signaling an agreement for a period of time, but you have an off-ramp at the end of each year if you find that it's not providing the value. I don't know that that's clear in this current IGA, the way it's crafted. So, I would like to review that.
Right. So, I, can I just say, because if we approve this tonight for the five-year agreement, even if we did one year, whatever it is, it doesn't have to come back to the board than every year. I mean, if we were to approve this, it doesn't have to come in front of the board again to approve for the following years. So, we just.
That's correct.
We need to just, I think, get correct information on what's been going on since 2019.
Okay. So, to, my question was, we don't have to get this, the answer to the question is, we don't have to get this till the end of June. So, we have time without it having any negative ramifications on our district.
Madam President, that's correct.
Okay.
And just quick research shows that the 2020 IGA was a three-year IGA, and that the district can cancel with 90 days' notice. So, but we, why don't, if, with your permission, I'll do a little memo on what the history has been of the organization, what the extra costs are, and what the termination provision is.
Okay, thank you. So, to address the motion and the second, all in favor to table this item at this point, say aye.
Aye.
The motion to table passes 5-0. Thank you. And we're gonna move on to 8I, recommend approval for revised job description and position for Web Content Strategy Manager. Ms. Werner?
This is Christine. Okay. Is, am I on?
Yeah.
Okay. One sec. Let me pull up mine. Is this position currently filled?
Am I good to talk?
Yeah, there you are.
Hello. Madam President, governing board members, Dr. Menzel and Gladys. So, backstory is that we currently have a Digital Content Manager who has been doing the duties outlined in the job description before you tonight.
Okay.
Now, the Digital Content Manager job description reads much more like video, because when that position was brought onboard, the idea was that the website was set it and leave it. And essentially, our schools and our departments would be able to make any necessary changes. That has not been the case. And in fact, we've found the Digital Content Manager to be very supportive of our schools in, in meeting their needs as it relates to the website. We've had many asks for videos, and it looks like we have a videographer. And so, it has been a challenge to try to meet the needs of the web and then do any video. And so, given that, what we'd like to do is actually have the Digital Content Manager do the video as outlined in their job description, and then have a, essentially a webmaster who is going to do the web work. Another item to mention is, we will be rolling out an Intranet, and that will be an additional duty that will land, you know, either on this person, if you approve tonight, and/or on the Digital Content Manager, which just means even less likely that we would get ever any video. The Intranet is coming about because what we have right now, which is basically files that are shared internally, that is going away. That technology is aging out. And so, it's a good, a good opportunity to roll out an Intranet. But that is something that we have not ever had to manage. So, that'll be entirely new, and again, another duty.
So, so, this is a new position and a new person?
It is, yeah. So, so, a lot of people think, wait, we already have this person. But the person we have is doing a job that is part of their job description, but not their whole job description. And so, this would be essentially a realignment for the current employee, and then an opportunity for a new employee that would manage the web and, and future Intranet.
Okay. And the $96,000 that this pay for this new person, which is M&amp;O Funds, is, is that the market rate? It just seems really, really high, when, you know, we really have to take care of our teachers in our classrooms first.
So, that's not just salary. I'd like HR.
Perfect.
Talk about that.
And I may have to pinch-hit to Shannon if I mess this up. It is a mid-range of the salary, and it also includes the benefits, which calculate at 20%, give or take, or give a little bit more on top of that. So, so, it would include mid-range salary, if that is where a person were to be placed, plus the benefits that are associated with the salary.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Board Member Carney.
Thank you, President Sanowski. We've heard it a couple times tonight, that our number-one priority is classrooms spending. And so, I'm not sure this is where we should be spending our funds right now. I wanna know, though, I see that the communications budget has doubled in salary expenditure from fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '23. Is, is this position included in the $444,350, or is it, or would this be on top of, added onto top of that?
President Sanowski, Board Member Carney, if I may, a few of those positions were vacant. And so, while there appears to be a doubling of the amount of money that was budgeted, it is due in large part to one, two, three, four positions. Some were hired mid-year, some were not filled, and so... hired mid-year, some were not filled, and so, the budget was allocated, but the position may not have been filled. So, when I did the math on it, the actual net change from, between the vacancies and the mid-year hires for those positions is, again, I'm not the math specialist in the room, but a net change really overall of approximately $85,000. So, if I may give you an example, the Director of Communications, my colleague to my right here, was a mid-year hire. So, half of a salary was indicated in fiscal '22. Now, she's been here for the full fiscal '23 to date with a full salary, so double of what it was in the previous fiscal year. So, that's an additional, give or take, $50,000. Social Media Specialist was vacant for almost the entire year of fiscal '22. That position is now filled, so there's an increase of another $50,000. And then, there is another position, where we had, we did have an upgrade from one position, so that increased salary a bit. And then, we, the governing board approved the Coordinator of Strategic Partnership, so that was an additional $74,000 and some change. So, if you add up those differences between the vacancies, the approval of the new position, and a reclassification, that's actually the net difference.
Okay, thank you. I'm just concerned about spending more money in this way in communications when we're having to cut positions in the, that are in the, in the schools right now, so.
What? Can you clarify that? We're not cutting positions in the schools.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, not, social workers weren't offered contracts. There's positions, I'm saying, I maybe ordered that wrong. People in our schools that don't have, weren't offered renewed contracts. So, I'm just saying, I'm not sure if this is where our money should be spent, if our number-one priority is the classroom and student learning. Thank you.
I would like to just comment on that. We hear from the community that communication's important, over and over again, whether you're a parent, you live within the boundaries of SUSD, whatever. So, this is a way to meet those goals and objectives, is to have a communications department, because a few years ago, we did not have a well-established communications department. So, I really appreciate the work that has been done. That is very obvious to me, knowing where we've come from and where we are now. Just want to make that clear.
100%. I absolutely agree with that. I mean, the communications team has been doing amazing work. That is not what I said at all. I'm just saying, I'm not sure if this is proper use of our funds right now.
Any other comments? Dr. Hurtwells?
Thank you, Board President Sanowski. Dr. Menzel, I'd like to ask your thoughts on this.
So, to build on what Christine has already shared, in the 21st century, video media is the number-one platform for being able to get your message out. As much as I prefer text, this next generation looks for video all the time. The notion that you can manage both the video content and the web with the Internet interface in one person is an unrealistic job expectation. And so, as we looked at it, we've been outsourcing some of the video work, but that is really expensive if you do that on an ongoing basis with a third-party entity. So, we've been able to do some of it. We've actually seen some, you saw the Coronado Learning Community video, for example. That's high-quality, really compelling. There are a lot of important stories to tell. But if you don't separate these two functions, something suffers in the process. So, what Christine said is that we would focus on the web management and the Intranet, because that's the, that's the, that's the gut. It's not the glossy. It's not going to help us tell our story externally, but it's going to keep things functioning. So, that's what we would default to, and we would not be able to do some of the things in terms of video. And if you look at other school districts in the Valley, there are some that have much more robust video departments, not just one person, in order to be able to do that. So, we're trying to do it as thinly as we can in terms of a lean staff, but it is fundamentally different job descriptions, which is why we've, we moved forward with this recommendation, because combining it into one, we've learned over the last couple of years that one, one part of the job description suffers while you focus on the other, and that's ultimately been video.
Vice President Warner?
And I've, we've actually exchanged communication regarding video and marketing, and I'm, I love marketing. My concern is, and I'm not opposed to this, so, but my concern is, so with the MNO dollars, and this is obviously a new hire, I know that there are teachers that were looking for aides, and there's, we're short aides in some of the classrooms. And I just want to make sure that we are spending our money wisely and putting it all in the right places. And then, we have negotiators here that negotiate pay for our staff, and we want to just be, you know, really, really good stewards of the money, making sure that we are putting it where it belongs in the classroom. So, and we cannot out-market a parent's experience. So, there's a lot going into it. Again, I'm not opposed to it, but I wanted to make sure that we're definitely on board, and maybe we make some cuts in other places that's not MNO dollars, and that's not affecting our staff, so we can help us. Thank you.
And Vice President Warner, you, since you pulled this, would you like to make a motion on this item?
Yes, one more comment. I do want to have a discussion about some items that we can cut, that I've been reviewing the budget. And I think that that is something that I'm going to condition this approval on, is that we have another discussion about some items moving forward that we can cut back on. Or at least, I'm going on record as saying that. I'm going to go ahead and prove this, or, you know, support this today, but we have to cut back in other areas so that our staff is taken care of. So, with that, I make a motion to approve.
Board Member Lindsay has his microphone request on.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that even with this, Dr. Menzel, I have had conversations that the district is looking to provide some more support to some of our schools. I don't know if you want to touch on that at all, or?
Oh, thank you.
So, there are, and I would be happy if I, if I may, President Sanowski. So, there are, through the IBN process, there are other interests that have surfaced. And one of those commitments we've made over time is to look at our staffing ratio and structure to make sure that we're providing the kind of support at the building level that we need. And as we move forward with the AP recommendation to move 11-month to 12-month, one of the interests that surfaced related, was related to support for our middle schools that are large. And we've got four that are approached to, approaching 1,000 kids.
And K8.
And K8, right. So, thinking Shianne, and then our three larger middle schools. So, it's going to take some time to finalize the staffing structure, and that's, that's always been discussed as something that we bring forward for implementation in '24, '25. But what I've said in some of the conversations I've started with staff already is, we need to identify what we can do this coming year in those large middle schools and the large K8 to provide support. And that's going to require conversation with those building principals to say, what's the best support? Is it additional clerical support? Is it another registrar? What's the individual support in those buildings to address that concern? We want to get the staffing ratio and structure right, and so, that's going to take a little bit more time. That shouldn't stop us from being able to address the immediate need next year.
Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to approve item 8e. Oh, aye.
Aye. 8i.
Yeah. Motion to approve Consent Agenda, item 8i.
And I will second that motion. All in favor to approve 8i, recommend approval of revised job description and position for Web Content Strategy Manager, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That motion passes 4-1. We have moved through our consent agenda. We are moving on to our action items. 9a, tentative approval of capital budget for the 2023-2024 school year. Shannon Crozier?
Great. All right. Board President Sanowski, Vice President Warner, members of the board, Dr. Menzel and guests, tonight, we are bringing forth the proposed capital, or tentative capital approval for the district to move forward as we start setting up for next year and getting things ready to go so schools can start entering requisitions and get, getting what they need in now, so that they're here by July 1st. I'm a little excited about this one, because this is different. We've done this agenda item for the past several years, but this year, we took a much different approach to how we move forward with it. And so, I'm kind of excited to share how that's worked, because that's been, that's been a, over a year-long process of looking at what our capital needs are and identifying how we can better spend our capital dollars. So, with that, a couple of things to keep in mind with the capital budget. This is a little bit easier to protect and predict, because unlike MNO, the state allocation for capital is actually based on the prior year ADM. So, we know what our ADM is for this year. It makes it a whole lot easier to predict what our capital budget will be for next year. So, it is based on prior year, which for next year means it's based on this year's ADM. The voter, the capital override is based on the voter-pooed pamphlet, so it's very clear on how we have to spend those dollars and how much we have to spend for that. And then, we, we kind of did a mixture of things with the budget this year. So, within the capital budget, the past practice has been just allocate out everything based on ADM of our school, and just, just give them the same amount every year based on how many students they have. And we wanted to get away from that and really look at, some things, yeah, need to be allocated by ADM, but some things need to be looked at. What does a school needs? Where are the needs? Some schools have more needs than other schools. We have schools that have been completely redone, so their needs aren't as high. They still have needs, but they're not as high as some of the other schools that haven't been addressed. And so, we really wanted to focus on kind of a mixture, using some things will be allocated by ADM, so that being like, we do a allocation for athletics, we do a little, a small allocation for PE equipment, so the schools can get the equipment they need for PE program. We do the same for Fine Arts and Library. But with the additional dollars, we also allocate it out based on what is the needs of schools. And we went through a whole process to identify that. And then, the carryforward projections that we have are pretty close to the estimates we had last year. It's a little hard to tell at this stage where we're going to finalize that out, especially because, like, we haven't finalized a textbook adoption. Depending on what that could be, you know, a million or two. So, depending on where things land could change that carryforward. So, the carryforward that we have projected for next year is pretty much in line with what we've done in the past, knowing that how things fall throughout the rest of this year. Unfortunately, capital items are sometimes a longer lead time to get them, so the things that we could order as early as February, and we may not get them until July, which means it rolls in into the next fiscal year. So, this is, the carryforward's a little bit harder to predict, but this is where we are based on what we've, we've had in the past. So, with that, we are projecting the state allocation to be $10.4 million, with a carryforward of $4 million in the state allocation. And then, for the override, the override that passed was for 14.5 million, or 10% of the RCL. So, because of that, it's capped at 14.2 million, or approximately 14.2 million for next year, with an additional $2 million in carryforward, putting us at basically $30.7 million, which is a lot of money. I will tell you, when we went through the process of our capital planning and what are the needs for next year, we had over $10 million above this budget, that we had to go back to people and say, okay, we gotta, we gotta figure out some more things that could be put to the '24, '25 school year, or what, what is a definite need that has to happen now? Or in some cases, and I'll talk about this a little bit more, we did a, okay, we only have $600,000 for furniture. We know that schools ask for more than $600,000 in furniture needs, and frankly, it's $10,000-plus to be able to do one classroom. $600,000 isn't going to get us that far. So, we've said, okay, we're going to put aside this much money and then start to look at what are the highest needs. But definitely figuring out, how to redo, how to cut $10 million is, is not a fun task. So, with that, we started a capital planning committee, and we actually started this back in October of '21. And the idea being is that the district has not had, in a number of years, a capital plan, nor have they had capital standards, which is not a good way to function. And so, through that, we said, we need to bring together a group of our stakeholders, of our employees, our schools, our, we have community members on it, to say, okay, what are the needs of the schools? And quit this, you know, stop just allocating money to the schools and saying, you all get the same amount, and start looking at, what do we need to be, to give the schools what they need with the highest priorities? So, that's really where this kind of stemmed from. And then, working from that, even beyond it, is developing, what is our standard? What is a standard classroom that you can expect to see? And Dennis is actually working with our purchasing director, Roger Spivey, to develop a, basically a catalog, that this is what a standard classroom should look like, and these are the options for that, so that when you go into a room, you know this is what it should have. The hard part is going to be, we're not going to be able to change all of our classrooms to that standard in one year's time. That's going to be a long process, especially when you look at high school classrooms that have, like, the old-school desk, that's one piece, that doesn't fit every student. So, it's going to take a little bit of time to do that. But we've started the process, which is the first step, of saying, what are the needs of our schools? What, what softwares are we using, and are they the right software? What's, what's needed out there beyond just playground facilities and shade structures and sound equipment, to make sure that our schools have what they need to be successful? So, we started that. We had meetings in October, November, January, March, and then we kind of stopped. And there was two parts to that. One, once you hit March, we started a very heavy budget season. But we also knew at that point that we were talking about an override, and I wanted to make sure that there was no feeling out there that could be that this committee was there to, to decide or to sway people for the override. And so, we stopped that committee at that point to make sure that there was no confusion or even perceived thought that, that that could be something that was to sway the override. Once that was done, we brought those meetings back in December, and from December through now, we were meeting quite frequently to really wrap this up and to say, what are we going to do, what are we going to do with the funds that we have for next year? So, like I mentioned, we had finance leadership, we had department leads, we had principals from different schools, we had four community representatives. Unfortunately, we didn't always have, the community representatives couldn't always be there, but it was always opened up to them to hear their input as well. So, what we did is, we went to all of our sites and said, and departments, and said, what do you need? What are the needs of your schools, and what are your needs over the next several years, the next five years? And tell us when you think those needs are going to hit. So, maybe I don't need something this year, but I'm going to need, I'm going to need, you know, new technology in my classroom in three years. So, we asked them to really go back and say that. And I'll be honest, we shared with them, give us your would have to have, would like to have, and boy, that would be really great to have, because there are things that we could do that are even above and beyond, that we'd like to get to. So, we asked them to do that, and then we asked them to go and rank those things and tell us, one, how much are they going to cost, or anticipate costing, and then, two, what are the really, like, I really have to have that versus that that would be really great to have on my campus. And from there, we started narrowing it down and working with the different departments. There's a lot of conversations between our finance team and, you know, facilities and curriculum to say, are we doing this already? Is this in alignment with what we're doing? Is this a duplicate of something you're already doing? And start to narrow that down, and then prioritize. And then, going through and determining, this is what was approved by the, by the voters of our community for our override, and so, how does that align with what we need to do and with those requests? So, this is just kind of a highlight of what we have going on. For the technology, we have the student and staff device refresh, refreshment, interactive flat panels, firewall refresh, classroom audio upgrades. And there's multiple phases to this, because we can't get to all of it in one year. As well, with software, shade structures came up as a huge item when we said, what do schools need? And, and what do we need for our parents who are, and our kids that are waiting for their parents to pick them up? So, shade structures came up a lot, so we're addressing that. Playground equipment, furniture for the classroom. I mean, our schools that were redone, beautiful classrooms, but there's a lot, when we redid the high schools, they didn't give them an allocation to redo the furniture. So, some of that furniture in there is from, like, again, I said, the '90s, where it's that one-piece desk that has not worked for collaboration, that does not work for all students. Facility improvements, we know that need to take place, textbook adoptions, instructional resources, library materials and furniture, that was another need that came up. Within athletics, there's always the equipment that they're replacing, but above the equipment replacement that needs to happen, the sound systems in the gyms and stadiums really need to be addressed, scoreboards need to be addressed, upgrades to those auditoriums. Within fine arts, there's sheet music, there's visual arts equipment, kilns, and instruments, uniforms within the fine arts and athletics. instruments, uniforms within the fine arts and athletics. Transportation, we have some service vehicle replacements. And then this kind of crosses between transportation and security. But we found earlier this year when we did the drill at Kokopah, that our, our buses can't communicate on the radios that our security or schools have. So if there's an incident, they can't even communicate through the radio system. So one of the bigger issues where, the bigger things that we're targeting within transportation and security is a radio system that is universal that will work. One, if you're out, you know, if you're driving outside of Scottsdale, the radio system doesn't work so great. But two, that works universally within our schools and the bus system to be able to communicate better. Security, again, had that radio system update. That's a huge ticket item. High schools access control systems, additional cameras, and then emergency stadium lighting, stadium lighting. Just to break down that a little bit more, within the override, we have these areas of curriculum, classroom and, classroom technology, or technology, fine arts, athletics and libraries. So this kind of broke it down a little bit more from the requests that we have and the, what things were asked for. What we identified as override dollars. So as you can see, 2.4 million dollars going into curriculum, the bulk of that being a textbook adoption. However, a lot of instructional software as well in instructional materials. Within the classroom or technology, 5.2 million for the classroom. So that's things directly in the classroom. That's student devices. That's those flat panel screens in the classrooms. 1.8 million for IT equipment. Some of that is like network upgrades that have to happen on the campuses. And then 956,000 dollars for software. And that's classroom software, not district software. Within fine arts, the biggest chunk is really going to instruments, but then auditoriums needing some upgrades. And that area, and then some small amounts for like equipment, sheet music and uniforms. Athletics, one of the things we did with that is the schools are used to getting an allocation that they need for their PE equipment. Or I'm sorry, for their athletic equipment. So we kept that allocation. We've always had 250 set aside that got allocated out to the schools based on the number of students they have. We kept that for them, so they still have that portion of it. But we said, okay, there's 551,000 is basically the amount for athletics. The difference we put into what needs to happen at the schools. So from a majority of the schools, that came up as the need to be equip, or sound equipment in the gyms and auditoriums. I know there was a discussion about Desert Mountain and a scoreboard being a higher priority. And so we've changed that. So one thing I would say is there's flexibility within this until the dollars are spent. Nothing, I mean, it's, it's move, we can move things around. But we wanted the schools within that money to be able to say, this is what I need more. And if that's a scoreboard, it's a scoreboard. If it's auditorium equipment, it's auditorium equipment. But we want it to be, what does the school need beyond just what was allocated for equipment at their school? Library material is the same type of thing. Allocated the portions like we normally have to the schools for their materials, but then we set aside dollars. There was quite a few asks for library furniture tables that can be used to collaborate, those types of things. And so we put money aside for that. And I'll explain a little bit how that's going to work with furniture in a minute. Furniture fixtures and equipment, we did a small, the schools have always gotten a small portion. We limited that quite a bit down to 250. So they have money if there's something small they need to do. Each school is getting a few thousand dollars. So they're not going to be able to buy, it's not going to pay for a classroom furniture. And that's not the intent of it. It's really like, I need some math manipulatives, which are actually considered capital. I'll use these funds to pay for that. And then furniture for classroom standards. So one of the projects, like I mentioned, that we have worked on this year is developing what is going to be our classroom standards. And we hope to, we will have that here in the next cup, next month or so of what is the classroom standard. From that, this money will go into an allocation that is held in facilities. So Dennis Rayler's team. And they will look at it and say, okay, we know these classrooms are the most egregious when it comes to getting to our classroom standard of what we want for furniture. And so they'll be allocating that 600,000 dollars based off, these are the classrooms that we know need, need the most help to get them a little bit closer to our standard. So we put that aside for that. And then playgrounds, we put 320,000 dollars for shade structures. Again, every school wants shade structures and it depends on what you're getting. Those can range from over 50,000 dollars and up. I mean, 50,000 is the cheapest and, and that goes up from there. So again, the same thing we said, let's put the money aside for shade structures and let Dennis's team go back and say, okay, these are, we can hit so many, these are what we can hit for schools. And these are the schools that need it, that have like the, the most dire need right now for some shade out there. And so we'll start targeting those schools based off of that. Then we get into the state allocation. And the textbooks we know cost, especially the ones that we know are coming up are going to be more than a few million dollars. So we had to kind of split that out between the override as well as the state allocation. Facilities, we always know there's repairs. The facilities repair line of 1.1 million, that's in line with what we've had in the past for them. So we really did keep that in line with what we've had, so that they have what they need to, to make those repairs. And then there was all kinds of school requests that came in for various things. You know, it could be as simple as, I need a sink. Or other things are, we, you know, I need this restructured in the office and move this around. So there's various repairs there. So we put 680,000 aside for that. District had a couple of requests. I met with a department who said, the chair that I use has two rollers. Do you think I could get some money for a new chair? And I thought, yeah, we really, if you only have two rollers on your chair and no armrest, we really, we can get you a new chair. So we did put some money aside to be able to take care of some of those, those little requests at the district. And then again, security was huge. Those radios, as you can see, were 750,000. Part of that will take place, there's some that's starting now within transportation, so we have them on the bus come July 1st, when school, you know, when school starts. But huge amount for those radios so that we're in alignment. Cameras, the access control project is a huge dollar amount. So, so working on that. And then just equipment that they need within security. And then information, IT, again, classroom, classroom technology, 1.6 million. IT equipment, a lot of that is like networking, things that are above what I understand within IT. But our equipment that they need to make our schools function. And then software, the 3.7 there, that's more going to be like district software. We start talking about our financial software, our HR software, those types of things. And then 330,000 dollars for transportation. So they, I think have the smallest of all of those budgets. This just kind of shares who all we had. The team has moved a little bit on our planning team. So we had some members last year that were here. They're no longer staff members that are here. So we've replaced them with new, new folks. But these guys put a lot of time into meeting at different times and then a lot of time outside going, okay, is that price that they put look like it's the right price? Is that a scope that we can even do? Is that, that's really, no, that's really a bond project that we're have to think about for a future bond. So just wanted to acknowledge them because they put a lot of time and effort into, into looking at these things and requests and figuring out what we could do now and what could unfortunately have to wait until the 24, 25 year. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Governing board members, do any of you have questions for Shannon? Dr. Hart Wells.
Thank you, Board President Sanowski. Thank you, Shannon. I just want you to confirm that the relative percents of the total, the overrides you were showing are aligned with the percents that were voter approved, right? That's how those breakdowns have been, right? You've arrived at those breakdowns in alignment with the voter approved ratios.
Yes, that's a, that's a great question, Dr. Hart Wells. We literally took the pamphlet on the dollar amount in the pamphlet and said, okay, that it was, you know, this percentage for each category. And said, okay, that percentage, we have 14.2 million, what does that equate? So that it is an absolute alignment with what we said in the voter pamphlet.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments at this time? Oh, okay, seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to support the tentative approval of the capital budget for the 2023, 24 school year. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Hart Wells. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Moving on to 9B, approval of Northern Arizona University, NAU Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, Arizona Teaching Residency, AZTR. I believe Alexis is reading and leading that discussion. And Dr. Dodds Karen is supporting it.
Good evening, President Sanowski, governing board members and Dr. Menzel. In alignment with our strategic plan, goal area 3.1, 3.2 and 3.3 commitments. We are so excited to bring this recommendation to you this evening. I'm not sure who's more excited between the two of us. We won't duke it out here. But I want to let you know just a few highlights about this MOU and this great opportunity for our support staff. Employee, support staff employees that have a bachelor's degree will, through an application process, if selected, earn a master's degree with a teacher certification at no charge. In addition, they will receive compensation so that they can go to school to earn their master's degree. Get paid so they can continue to pay bills. Additionally, they get some childcare support if needed. And in the second year, additional support regarding health benefits. Not only that, in alignment with the goal area, as outlined, this is a pathway for our current staff to move forward and become educators in Scottsdale Unified School District. When we submitted the board agenda item, we had a meeting, invited all of our classified staff to come to learn about this wonderful opportunity. We had, we didn't know how many we were going to have, so I had some approximation in there. We currently have six employees that have applied. We don't know yet who may receive that. These are, they all submitted for the employee, I mean, sorry, elementary certificate. And if I may, you have the MOU in front of you, but I, I want to highlight a story that, that I hope helps everyone understand why this is so important and why we're both so excited. This is just one story. We have a current employee at Tavon Elementary. She's been, we know her. My colleague, Dr. Susan Lugo, knows her from her previous district and she now works here with us at Tavon. She's had over 21 years of service to the children in those school districts, including ours, as a volunteer, a paraprofessional, ELL support. She put her own children first to support their college, sorry, to support their college and career aspirations because she could not financially do all for them and for herself. And I'm crying because she was crying. When we had this meeting and she was there, literally tears pouring from her. I'm not going to name her name because we didn't tell her. We want to talk about her tonight. She is so excited to have this possible opportunity to pursue a master's degree. Dr. Lugo has assured me that she should have been and could have been a teacher a long time ago because she's excellent. And she's serving our students today at Tavon. And I think this opportunity is, is remarkable for so many reasons. But that is a story that, that exists right now in this school district. So I don't know if Dr. Dodds Karen wants to say anything, but we're, we are very excited. And I'll stop crying now.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Board President Sanowski, Vice President Werner, Dr. Menzel Gladys and the rest of the board. The partnership that we are hoping that you would approve for us to pursue with, for Arizona Teacher Residency with NAU and the K-12 Center, as Alexis mentioned, is an opportunity for our employees who have a bachelor's degree to pursue a master's degree. The process for this program is in year one, the candidate would be a student teacher in one of our Title I schools. At the same time, they will be going to school to earn their master's degree. So Monday through Thursday, they will be in our schools, student teaching. Fridays, they would be in class. Sometimes on Tuesdays, they have synchronous or asynchronous learning as well. Year two of this partnership, we would interview the candidate on a preliminary teaching credential. They would be hired in SUSD as an employee on a preliminary credential. In year two, they are also finishing their master's degree. Year three, four and five, they are making a commitment to SUSD to stay in our schools. This is important because as Alexis mentioned, the master's degree is of no cost. Should the candidate choose to leave SUSD in those years, their tuition becomes a loan. What's also important to know, as Alexis mentioned, they would earn income. In year one, when going to school, they would earn 21,000 dollars as part of the grant. We did some math. I believe you would have to sub 144 days to earn 21,000 dollars. Alexis also mentioned that there is a stipend for healthcare and there's also a stipend for childcare. So if someone needs childcare, there would be funds available through the grant. In addition, there's a rainy day fund. So say you blow a tire and you now suddenly need to get all four replaced. They would have a rainy day fund where a candidate could apply for rainy day funds. We are thrilled at this opportunity, but we are also thrilled to know that residency programs show a retention rate that is much higher than a typical teacher preparation program. So when we can invest in our own, the people who are already serving in our schools, we have a, the confidence in the research for residency, as well as the commitment that the people have already shown to our district, that indeed, there will be a great return to SUSD. We are thrilled beyond measure that we do have these candidates. Dr. Lugo and I did have the opportunity to do the screening of the paper applications. And the process, just so you know, through the K-12 Center and NAU, is the candidates then go for an in-person interview and performance task. So they are interviewed, they have to do a demonstration, a teaching simulation, they have to analyze data and do a writing sample. So we will know in the next few weeks upon your approval if we can pursue this. And then of course, our next steps would be to work with our Title I elementary schools to see which campuses would want to be part of this partnership. As Alexis also shared with a candidate currently at Tavon, we do know that Julie Ballard is very interested in this for us. But we do see this as not only a support for our strategic plan, but more importantly, for future teachers. Any questions for us?
Dr. Hart Wells.
Thank you, Board President Sanowski. I don't have a question, other than where has this been all of our life, right? Fantastic. Thank you for bringing the opportunity to the district. Thank you to Northern Arizona University and their College of Education for providing an opportunity like this. This is really good stuff. Thank you.
And this creativity is great. Yes, we need more programs like this to support our employees because they are making a commitment, commitment to our own community and to the profession. So this is a win-win for SUSD. I do have a question about, there was an expectation of the district. I think it was responsibility number five for there's to be like a coordinator role. Will that be wrapped into an already existing position?
Yes, Board President Sanowski. So pending board approval, we have had conversations about some roles that we already have with our mentorship. The, as you read in the MOU, based on the number of candidates that as a district we may have, they have recommendations. If it's one to three, they would love for someone to be like a liaison. If it is four to seven, I think they want someone part-time. And if it's more than seven, they want a greater commitment. So we will, we would identify someone within our teaching and learning team to take on that responsibility.
Perfect. Thank you. Board Member Carney.
Okay, thank you for that. I've got a few questions, so I have a better understanding. Is, who is on the advisory board that they were talking about? Are any of our peoples are in advisory board, it said?
Oh, within the MOU.
Yes, within the MOU.
I'm not aware that we serve on the advisory board. It would be through Arizona Teacher Residency, K-12 Center and NAU.
Okay, so no one from SUSD is involved in, on, okay, on the board. Can you help me understand?
Sorry.
What do we, what have we budgeted, budgeted right now for this program coordinator that will?
We wouldn't add any additional cost. We would include it in with a mentor position.
Okay. And this is funded by, all funded by the grant?
The majority of this is funded by the grant. The candidates, there is a requirement for us with the candidates that we would contribute 5,000 dollars per candidate each year. So 10,000 dollars per candidate. $5,000 per candidate each year, so $10,000 per candidate. We have identified Indian Gaming Funds that we can use to support this.
And where it says initially that this position for next school year will be partially funded by NAU, do we know how much they're contributing and then?
Right, so if the board approves this, then we would work with them. So right now, folding this into a mentor position, depending on the number of candidates that we have, will be kind of a graduating scale of what our responsibility would be for working with them. So let's pretend it's $10,000. We can bill them twice, once for $5,000, once for another $5,000.
Okay, and then would it come before the board again next year for approval to continue the program, or not?
I would imagine, because it would be new cohorts. If we started a new cohort, we could bring you the update of the success rate, the attrition of anyone who maybe drops out of the program. We could certainly bring that to you as an annual. We're, we would be agreeing to a one-year initial cohort. Well, I shouldn't say one year, an initial cohort, which would be two years of teaching preparation, and then the remaining years to fulfill their five-year commitment.
Okay, great. Do you know any other, what other school districts are using this program or not?
Great question. Cartwright School District will be joining next year, Osborne School District, Roosevelt, Tempe Elementary, and us. And I can also add anecdotally, Tempe Elementary School District this year has nine teacher candidates. At the end of year one, during the teacher transfer process, which is a process that all school districts have, the candidates had the opportunity to interview alongside teacher candidates. Seven of the nine candidates were placed into positions before existing teachers. The other two got their second pick of a school. So all nine were immediately swooped up, and the principal said they hadn't seen more qualified candidates.
Nice, and so my last question for you, I think, is, so we're, we're not looking at going above six?
For this school year, no.
For this school year, no, okay.
That's how, we had, that, that's how many applied. We don't know that all six would be accepted.
So that would be our max?
Mm-hmm.
And what about for next year?
We would have to put it out there and see how many people would be interested.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, just to clarify, that cost is for two years, so we pay the $5,000 first year, and then the $5,000 the second.
Okay, thank you.
I do not see any more requests at this time. Oh, one just came in, Dr. Hartwells.
Not a request. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Super. I will second that motion, and that is for approval of 9B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes 5-0. Moving on to 9C, the second read and approval of governing board policy CE regarding administrative councils, cabinets, and committees. Dr. Hartwells.
Thank you, Board President Sanowski. This is the second read. You've seen the language. I think it speaks for itself. We've had a lot of discussion about it, and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Before we vote, I'd like to ask Dr. Menzel his thoughts, please, on the, on the amendment.
So, so thank you, Dr. Hartwells. From my perspective, the clarifying language in the agreement helps differentiate between our board policy that talks about board committees in the B section of our policy versus superintendent councils, committees, and advisory groups under CE, and delineates the difference between the two. And so, from my perspective, it's clarifying language that helps ensure the difference between a board-established committee that operates at the direction of the board pursuant to policy, and a superintendent council that was contemplated long before I got here as a part of how we operate the district.
Thank you, and I'll, waiting for the vote, I know.
Thank you.
Dr. Board Member.
Go ahead, Vice President Werner.
Thank you. So are you familiar with the legal letter that we all received back on March 27th regarding committees?
Madam President, Ms. Werner, I, I believe that you're speaking of the items submitted to the governing board from Mr. Evans, is that correct? Yes.
Do you have an opinion?
Madam President, members of the governing board, I don't provide legal advice in a public meeting. If you want to call for an executive session, we can go into exec to give legal advice, but I'm not going to opine in, in a public meeting. We have, as you are aware, there are other matters that are at issue with the district that are on the same subject matter, so.
Okay, so on April 6th, we received a B memo with an updated report for, according to policy CE with the update from the superintendent on superintendent committees. This was a committee, then I understand this was personal to some other board members. However, I've been on this committee since before I was over a candidate, and the reason that I find it important that some board, that board members or people who have an interest in subject B on committees, one would be parents who do want to be heard. And in this particular committee that we were talking about, the Supplemental Curriculum Review Committee, which was the, the committee that was causing the issue and ultimately led to this. Anyway, so I was on that committee. I did not vote as a board member, and the voting actually did not go in the favor of the parents. But I wanted to take this opportunity to really share what, some of the things that we discussed in the committee that is important to our community, and I have some examples.
Could we get a ruling on being an open meeting law, please? Thank you, Ms. McLennan. Madam President, members of the governing board, I'm not sure what you're trying to share, Ms. Werner, but the item that is before the board is the language of governing board policy CE and not your involvement on any prior committee. So if what you were going to share is about your involvement regarding a prior committee, that would be outside the scope of this agenda item.
Okay, so at a previous board meeting, actually, both board members sitting next to me, both made it very personal that it was about me, and so I did bring some examples today. However, we do vote on things that come before the committee, that have been, that have been reviewed by committees, and I don't support the language in there. If a board member wants to be on a committee, they definitely should be able to do that, and I'll leave it at that, and.
Board Member Carney.
Thank you, President Sanowski. So I'm glad we were able to get the report on the superintendent committees so we could learn more about what's going on on the administrative councils, cabinets, and committees. I do have concerns on how many superintendent committees and councils and whatnots that we have, and so I'm unsure if they're all necessary, and we might want to talk future about moving some of these to be board committees. But I was disappointed to see on this report that Dr. Menzel had discontinued the Supplemental Material Review Committee, and I'd like to know why.
Madam President. Ms. Carney, again, I think we're off topic with respect to this item, which is whether board members can serve on superintendent committees and whether this governing board wants to amend policy. I understand that both what you and Ms. Carney have brought up may be background information to the reasons as to why this change might have been proposed by one of your board members, but today, all you can talk about is this policy.
Okay, then I am, then I just, I don't agree with changing this policy. As policy BCA, our board ethics already states that governing board members shall not use their position as governing board members to unduly influence district or site-level committees, so there's no need to be redundant, so I don't know why we're repeating this when we already have policies stating what I just read. So I am not in favor of changing this policy.
You'll be able to express that through your vote. Board Member, or Dr. Hartwells, did you want to call for a vote?
Yes.
Since it was your initial motion.
I would like to call for a vote. I'd like to call for approving 9C, the second read and approval of governing board policy CE regarding administrative councils, cabinets, and committees as proposed.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Say aye.
Aye.
All in nays?
Nay.
No.
That motion passes 3-2. At this time, governing board members can make requests for future agenda items or topics for future consideration. Board Member Carney. Board Member Werner.
Yes, I'd like to propose a full presentation of the ELD Task Force, the results of the great work that a committee of roughly 20 people worked on last year.
Present the ELD Task Force?
Mm-hmm, presentation, yes, with that presentation to the board and our public. The second item is I'd like a presentation of our HR audit that was completed by Lyke Cliff over at the City of Scottsdale, and I'd like that presented to the board and to our public. And lastly, I would like to have a discussion regarding Margaret Curna's request for reimburs, expenditures to be covered.
Dr. Hartwells.
Thank you. And just to clarify, the last request, you want a discussion on Ms. Curna's expenditures to be covered?
There was an email that came out today with a letter from Ms. Curna.
Yes, could you tell the public what that letter said, please?
Yes, it, um, hold on. She requested.
Madam, Madam President, I, I think all we can ask for is agenda items at this point.
Thank you.
Dr. Hartwells, did you have a request for future items?
No, I have a request to take one of those requests off of a future item, but no, I do not, thank you.
I clarified with Menzel ahead of time.
Okay, seeing that there are no others, upcoming meetings, next, next meeting is Tuesday, May 2nd at 6:00 PM, and that is a special governing board meeting which will be held at the MDA. And then, May 16th, we will be back here at 6:00 PM for a regular governing board meeting. I make a motion to adjourn this regular meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District Number 48 governing board. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Hartwells. All in favor to adjourn this meeting, say aye.
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 Aye. That motion is passed 5-0. The time is 9:29 PM.